That is in leadership in this community. Because I think over the years, things have fallen on deaf ears. And we, the citizens, we're tired of it. We're tired of it. If an election. If this who are not going to advocate for all of our residents. We want all of our residents taken care of in this community. And this project over down Fayetteville Street, it may sound good, public housing, this and that. It's not working. So I'm asking the mayor, as well as the city manager, and there's some other things also. How many African Americans are getting contracts with this job? And we'll talk about that next time. Thank you very much.
Yeah. The financial structure, the overall amount of units that are coming must go to the site. And, you know, what are the, the pros and cons? I, I, I think Ajax mentioned, an affordable unit being 324,000, you know, the cost of development is the cost of development. And whether we go below that threshold to support an income that doesn't match it or above, those are the choices that we have to make, but the money has to come from somewhere. So therefore, you have market rates mixed with it to help supplement the cost of the actual affordable one. But I'm gonna allow Councilmember Risk to break down the funding structure on this.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I can't, I'm not sure I can break down the funding structure now, although there are folks from DHA that may be able to speak to that if there are questions. Yeah. But I did want to say, I just pulled up a quick email. So, so that for Phase One, Phase One of Fayette Place, there will be 252 units, all affordable units, okay? That means 30 units or 12% will be 30% AMI or lower. Mr. Snell, if I'm wrong, again, yeah. 78 units or 31% will be up to 50% AMI. 60 units or 24% will be up to 60% AMI. And 84 units or 33% will be between 61 and 80% AMI. So those, that's just, that's, and that's the first phase, as I understand, but I, but I'm glad Mr. Snell is here, who may be able to answer more of that and speak to the financing. But thank you.
Yes.
And Mr. Snell, I'm gonna ask that you
I, I, I'm gonna ask, Mr. Snell. I'm gonna ask that you are explicit in detail as much as you can, or as much that has been confirmed thus far. We, I, I just don't want any doubt, and I think that community members have true concern. And I think that it needs to be addressed before we move on. But enough of not understanding how this actually works and just going with it. So we're not gonna hear those concerns and ignore it and move on. So, please.
Thank you. First, I want to address the, the matter with respect to the capital stack. When I'm talking about the funds that are going to be used for the financing of this project. The first one I want to mention or refer to is the $44 million that was approved for the actual issuance of bonds. This is not a direct cash contribution or a loan to Durham Housing Authority. The money, the bonds are going to be issued, the capital is gonna be raised. Actually, with respect to the $44 million, the bonds will be privately placed with Citibank. Citibank is providing that money for the construction. Those funds will be used for the construction. These funds do not go to DHA. So that's one source of the funding for this. And the $17 million that we have requested as part of the bond fund money, this was committed as part of the, of the approval for the bond funds for this project. The $17 million will go into the project as a contribution, as a loan. So D, DHA will not receive these funds for any operation purposes. They will go directly into the funding of this transaction. DHA will not be involved in the day-to-day operation and management of this property. There will be a third-party management company that's responsible for it. The ownership of this property shall be in the hands of Harmony Housing Gilbane. They are the guarantors of this. DHA will have a, structurally, we will be part of the managing membership that is still being negotiated, but that doesn't give us any authority over the actual management of this property. It doesn't give us any authority of the finance, and we are not guaranteeing anything. So this will not be a, another DHA-owned and operated property.
Thank you. Could you also differentiate or correct me from Ron? DHA is traditionally what we know it to be, as low-income concentrated housing that is dilapidated, that we're trying to move people out of. DVI is the arm that's responsible for the new developments that are sometimes mixed income as well, such as DeJoyce, such as what we just did over at Vanguard, et cetera?
So Development Ventures, Inc. is, is the development arm of D, DHA. On all of the transactions that we are involved in when we are doing, the low-income housing tax credit transactions, or other, some other transactions, DVI represents DHA in those transactions. And so they are our development arm of the corporation. DHA is traditionally all of our public housing, which we are moving away from to, to the other platform, which most, all of our development will be done under DVI. So there's a separate, although the board from DHA is also the board of directors from DVI, they are separate legal entities.
Got you, with separate responsibilities.
Yes.
Okay. What is the level of risk for the city in, in, in these projects?
Well, the level of risk is, I, I would say zero for the city. From the standpoint, the city is not responsible for the bonds that are gonna be issued on this transaction, the 44 million. The risk for the city is on the 17 million. If we, we look at it from the risk standpoint, if the project should default, that is an investment that the city has made into the, to this development. It, you know, under default situation, this could be funds, technically, we could say that, that are lost, right? Because if there's a default on the transaction. But that is from a, from a financial standpoint, whether the city is responsible for the bonds, the answer is, there is no risk because there's no responsibility on the behalf of the city or DHA when it comes to the $44 million in bonds that are being issued for this project.
Thank you. So this is a very complex matter, having to get really creative in structures to get, yeah. I'm gonna, I'm gonna have them ask questions. So it's a very complex stack of relationships to try and get, try and help us meet this, meet the mark. And so thank you for breaking that down. I, I am, we are gonna take a little time just to, because I don't want any confusion on this. Councilmember Freeman, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that folks were aware of when your meetings were, so that they could actually, I guess, get some of this information, because I think it's occurring at your meeting, which doesn't happen here. And so just making sure they're aware when those meetings occur and how they can be involved.
So our committee meetings are the third week of each month, and our board meetings is the fourth week. As a matter of fact, we have committee meetings next, Tuesday, Wednesday, next Wednesday, and then the following week, we will have our board meeting.
What, what day?
What time and where?
At 4:23 Morris, which is our new office, okay? The committee meeting starts at 3:30, 3:00, and then the board meetings at 5:30.
Okay, thank you.
That was all.
Okay.
5:30.
On the 26th.
Yes.
And I'd like to add, this, this has gotten a lot of eyes, even beyond community members, all the way to the state auditor's office. Just last week, we took a team to Raleigh. Councilmember Risk joined me, and Mr. Manager and his chief of staff, as well as you, Mr. Snell, and your staff, to make sure that we had a compelling argument of why we are making these.
I understand that.
Your phone is only responding to me when it does that today. I see. But just so, I just want to assure everyone that even the state auditor's office has close eyes on this. It is a unique relationship that is pretty innovative, and we're gonna move forward, trying to get more housing and the right type of housing at every, at every level as we possibly can, as well as supplemental space, commercial, so that we can build a community. And so there are a lot of eyes on this, and we will get it right. I have faith in that. And, but yeah, I, I appreciate you joining us last Friday, as well as being here today to answer these questions.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. Number 16. Okay, are we back on?
Yeah, I don't, we are.
We are?
Yeah.
All right. We're gonna go back to, before we get too deep in the agenda, the online speakers. Oh, here we go. Yeah, Citizens Matters. So Terrence Priester, can you hear me? Terrence Priester.
Mr. Priester is showing that he's speaking, but we cannot hear him.
You turn your volume up, Terrence. He can hear me. Okay. Mr. Priester, one moment, please, or, or Chiquina, one moment.
Mr. Mayor, while we're grading, the clerk has indicated that the board's commissions report is ready. I don't know if you want to entertain that.
Would you like to go ahead and?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, pro tem, Mr. Mayor. We do have a nomination for the Go Triangle Board of Trustees reappointment, and that's Patrick Hannah. And then the next item is the Affordable Housing Implementation Committee with the category at large. We do not have consensus. There were three votes for LaShonda Tyler, two votes for Shanika Baumann, and one vote for John Douglas. And I was curious to know if anyone would like to change their vote.
There were three votes for who?
For LaShonda Tyler.
You can, you can change one of my votes to cross the threshold.
That works.
If you would, thank you.
Okay, so LaShonda Tyler received the nomination, and the last item, which is the undiscovered Durham appointment, has been referred back to staff. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Priester, can you hear us? Okay, I'll, I'll come back.
Could we put a, could we put a mic up to a computer? Go ahead and speak.
Mr. Priester, give us one moment. We're gonna try something old school.
Can you hear me? Are you guys able to hear me?
Uh, yeah, 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 yeah. It's gonna echo.
You guys able to hear me? Absolutely. So good afternoon, everyone. First and foremost, I wanted to thank the City of Durham and its council for allowing us to have the opportunity to speak today regarding the tenants' rights and the recent enforced policies. We understand and appreciate that these policies were created with the intention of protecting tenants from neglectful and unethical landlords, often referred to, of course, as slum lords. That is a valid and important concern, and we recognize the city's efforts to address those issues. However, it is also important to acknowledge that while there are indeed some bad actors in our community, not all landlords fall into that category. Many of us are responsible, community-minded property owners who take pride in maintaining safe, affordable, and well-maintained housing for our residents. The issue we'd like to raise today is that these new policies, while well-intended, are written and enforced in a way that is one-sided, leaning entirely in favor of tenants without fully considering the impact on fair and responsible landlords. The reality is that if these policies remain as they are, they will create conflict and lead to unintended consequences. They make it increasingly difficult for honest landlords to operate sustainably, to cover costs, maintain properties, and continue offering affordable rental assistance. When the scales are tipped too far in one direction, it discourages property owners from staying in the rental market altogether. And this is where we see a much larger issue, one that affects the entire city. When landlords feel that they can no longer make a fair return, or that the system is stacked against them, many will choose to sell their properties. And when that happens, these homes don't disappear. They often end up purchased by larger outside investors and developers who have no personal connection to our community. This process fuels gentrification, not the prevention of it. It drives up property values, reduces the number of affordable rental units, and ultimately makes it harder for the very people these policies were meant to help to find housing they can afford. The end result is that the cost of both renting and buying will rise even higher than it already is. Tenants who were meant to be protected will now face fewer housing options and higher rents. Families who hope to buy homes will be priced out of the market even further. This cycle hurts everyone, tenants, landlords, and the community as a whole. We are here today to oppose the new tenant rights policy, not because we dismiss the importance of fair treatment for tenants, but because there are already existing systems in place, including the courts and other legal remedies, that address situations where tenants experience legitimate issues with their landlords. These established processes allow for fairness, due process, and accountability on both sides. Creating additional one-sided policies only adds unnecessary layers of bureaucracy, discourages property ownership, and creates
Thank you, Mr. Priester. Thank you, that is your time. Next is Chiquina Priester.
Yes, thank you for having me today. I'd like to speak to you as a social worker in regards to the same policies. I graduated from North Carolina Century University, and I am committed to helping and serving under, underserved and marginalized communities. In my work in the mental health field, I've been tasked with helping people who are priced out of the housing market to find affordable housing, and that is a struggle. Though the state has designated millions of dollars to programs such as TCLI, which is Transitional Living Community Support, a lot of the people who fall into this category are priced out, not only because they don't have the finances, but they have barriers. They have prior evictions. They may have a criminal history. They might not make three times the rent. And so they often ask, do you know any private landlords? And they're not asking for a list of landlords such as myself or my colleagues, who may have lived in the home and are looking to pass that home down for generations. What they're looking for is someone who will give them undermarket rent. And in exchange for undermarket rent, sometimes there are deferred maintenance issues. The house is still habitable, but there may be some delayed repairs or delayed maintenance issues. And they beg for it. They, they want it because it beats homelessness. Our shelters are full, public housing is full, and it has issues of its own. So if we, if we require all landlords, so landlord C and D properties, such as an A and B property, where are these tenants gonna go to? I think that we are creating or accelerating gentrification by, by enforcing these policies. And I'll yield, that's my time.
Thank you so much. We heard, we heard from the other, that's all of our speakers, correct? Did we do all of the, yeah. All right, thank you so much for your comments. The next item is number, did we do number 15?
You had two speakers in the room on 16.
On 16, all right, let's do that first. Request to permanently close the entirety of Hayti Lane. This is a public hearing for?
Mr. Mayor, I indicated that their comments, while welcome today, will not be part of the record of the public hearing, in that the public hearing has been scheduled and broadcast for our next Monday meeting. So that notice was given.
Rivka and Wendy Allen.
Anita Scott Neville and 16.
16, okay, yeah, here we go. Okay, Rob Emerson and Anita Scott Neville. Would you all like to speak today, or you want to wait until it can be recorded? Okay. All right, we can't hear you on the, our resource.
Oh, on-off button, thank you. I'm not a tech guy. I have Rob Emerson, I'm here representing the applicant, and I'm just here if there are any questions. I've not done this before at a work session, so I expect you'll want the bulk of my presentation on the 17th.
So we will address it on the 17th. That's what I'll acknowledge. Normally, we move all commentary to when the actual public hearing is heard.
Yes, sir.
Because it was advised, I don't want to be misleading, so we will, we have one person for 16. And Chris Pearstein. Yeah, so just, just for public record, it, it will be a practice of hearing comments for the public hearing item on the night of that. But today, I'll, I'll allow it. So, Ms. Scott Neville's.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Before I share my comments, I am happy to learn that it is going to be, this item will be heard later on. And so if you will receive my comments in light of the fact that I just learned that you're gonna hear it later on, I'm here as a member of Hayti Reborn, and as a member of the Durham community and the Hayti community, to express concern about the proposal for permanent cosmetic change to the historic area known as Hayti. Specifically, item 16 proposes permanent closure of Hayti Lane, an area that lies east of Old Fayetteville Street and adjacent to Tin City and other small residential spaces and behind the Hayti Heritage Center. The area that adjoins Hayti Lane, and that is surrounded by Old Fayetteville Street, Merrick Street, Withers Court, Shirley Caesar Court, Tin City, and the Hayti Heritage Center is part of the historic fabric of Hayti, and is in fact an area where streets, homes, and communities have already been permanently destroyed as a result of urban renewal. However, what's different is that with the urban renewal action that was announced, approved, and citizens had some knowledge about the outcome. In this case, no one that I have spoken to is aware of the creation of Hayti Properties LLC and their imposition of development plans until now. Urgent fact-finding done as a result of what we've learned has informed me that current property owners, business persons, and the Hayti Heritage Center have no knowledge of this proposed action. I've also learned that North Carolina Assembly General Statute 160A-299 entitles procedure for permanently, entitled procedure for permanently closing streets and alleys. Item A specifies that when a city proposes to permanently close any street or public alley, the council shall first adopt a resolution declaring its intent to close the street or alley, and call a public hearing on the question. The resolution shall be published once a week for four successive weeks prior to the hearing. In the interest of time, and since we know that it will be heard, I want to focus on that last part. Has the resolution and your intention to have a public hearing about this been advertised for four successive weeks before it comes up in city council? And if so, when? The major concern is that none of the stakeholders are aware of this. Understanding that at this point rezoning is not a part of this proposal, other questions are, what is the intention of Hayti Properties LLC in closing Hayti Lane? Have property owners and residents of the surrounding lots been notified? Will the closure of Hayti Lane facilitate more land grab? Is this a prelude for rezoning Hayti?
Thank you. I'm gonna ask Sarah, if you can come up and address that.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. I just wanted to remind you all that while that is general legislation, the City of Durham has special legislation that allows us to forego the resolution, just do our standard notice and proceed that way. So you do not have to have that additional step, because you have special enabling legislation.
Thank you. And I can't tell you what to do, but if there are folks here that are in that, in that area, I'd advise that you speak with them. Uh, yeah, representing.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I thank Ms. Neville for coming. I think it's important to note that the City of Durham is not requesting this. There's, there's a, a person who owns property there that's requesting that this, this street be closed. So it, it's really important, this is not emanating from City Hall. So if that's out there, it, it, let us be factual about where this is coming from. Any landowner in the city can at any time appeal to us to close a particular street or do, we may not do it, but they can certainly appeal to us, and, and this is what this is. So this is not a city plan. This is a, a private owner coming in and requesting at the street closure. So I just wanted to put that on the record. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that. I was gonna stake that too, but, you know, communication. We're gonna make sure we do more of it and, and, and make sure it's clear, because I don't want assumptions thrown out there. It's, we have enough people that like to turn opinions into facts, so at least assumptions can be proven to be cleared up, so. Chris Pearstein? Would you like your comments heard today, or? Okay.
It'll make sense why in a second here. I also oppose this, but for a little bit of different reason. Looking at the street, it's not a terribly useful street, it's a dead-end cul-de-sac that's surrounded by one property owner's property. And so, you know, we're gonna take that off of our, our, our outlays for, for street maintenance and potentially create opportunities for new housing, which I think is great. But my concern is really kind of the process. We recently went through this with the Cliff Street closure on the border between Lakewood and Forest Hills. And we talked about how reducing this connectivity by closing a paper street or potential connectivity would negatively impact a lot of our goals, around Vision Zero, environmentalism, letting people walk and bike to things, access transit. And I think this actually has a lot of the same things, but in a community that is oftentimes much more forgotten about in terms of these issues, right? We all pay attention to the rezonings, but we don't think about street connectivity. And so I think it's really important that maybe we work through something where they provide at least a greenway where they provide at least a greenway easement on the southern border of the property. I think this would be really effective for providing that connectivity. And historically, you know, we've talked about how Hayti was sort of blown up by 147. And also Fayetteville Street, right? There's actually right next to this property or where that Hayti Lane junctions in is Old Fayetteville, which gives you a hint at what happened when 147 was built. New Fayetteville Street went in next to it, creating a lot more space, a five lane road. That's very dangerous and sort of splits the neighborhood in two. When you look at this, this street actually used to be something else. It used to be Glenn Street. And it connected all the way from Old Fayetteville, or what is now Old Fayetteville, to Alston and beyond. And there was many homes on this. There were businesses on this. And so I think we really have to think about how we're using these opportunities to actually reconnect the neighborhood instead of just further kind of taking it apart. So what I'd like you to think about too is that with this new villages at Hayti Development, right? We've got a new affordable housing development. The second biggest expense that people have after housing is transportation, right? And so these folks are probably the most likely to be cost burdened, not just in terms of housing, but in transportation as well. And they're going to lean on walking, biking, and taking the bus. And if you look at the route that we could actually add with Greenway on the southern border of this property, it would allow much easier access to the number five bus, cutting the travel time for a pedestrian, maybe in the rain, maybe in the heat, maybe in the cold, by about a third. I would also allow them to access a lot of the commercial spaces that are along Old Fayetteville and Fayetteville Street, which could provide access to shopping for maybe some groceries, get to the Walgreens, maybe the hair salon. Maybe it provides opportunities for jobs. Maybe it provides opportunities for them to open their own business one day. That would be wonderful. So I don't oppose this sort of in a general sense. I oppose it in the specific sense that I think we need to do the same due diligence here for Hayti that we did for this southern neighborhood and make sure that we provide connectivity. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, sounds good. Thank you all so much. Item number 15 is next. Durham Athletic Park Feasibility Study Presentation. This is a presentation designated up to 20 minutes. Feel free to lean in on the up to as much as you want.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, and city manager. My name is Jackie Field, and I serve as the Community Programs Division Manager in the city's General Services Department. We're here today to present the Phase One findings of the Durham Athletic Park Feasibility Study that includes what we heard from stakeholders and the community and the potential vision scenarios developed in partnership with Perkins &amp; Will, Idealisms, and city staff. Today, you will hear from myself and Xena Howard of Perkins &amp; Will. I would also like to acknowledge two other integral team members, project co-lead Tim Allren with the city's real estate team and urban designer and project manager with Perkins &amp; Will, Marlene V. Thank you both. Now let's move to the project vision and key takeaways from our community engagement efforts. The purpose of this feasibility study is to develop a bold, community-centered vision for the historic Durham Athletic Park, one that honors its legacy while imagining new possibilities for public use, cultural programming, and open space. The scope of work included four key deliverables, a parks and recreation and open space evaluation, equitable and inclusive community engagement, a study of how the DAP could connect to nearby trails, parks, and public spaces, and finally, the development of potential concepts. This slide outlines the full project schedule. We are here today at the dotted line to present the findings from Phase One of engagement. As part of the study, we reviewed and synthesized a range of adopted plans to ensure the future of Durham Athletic Park aligns with the city's broader goals. The vision for the DAP is being developed in alignment with Durham's existing and recently adopted plans and priorities. This ensures that the DAP vision is integrated into a larger connected strategy for downtown, supporting mobility, equity, cultural vitality, and access to high-quality public space. The Durham Athletic Park has been part of the city's story for nearly a century. Originally built in 1926 as El Toro Park, it was purchased by the city in 1933 and renamed Durham Athletic Park for public recreation. After a fire in 1939, the park was substantially rebuilt in 1940, creating much of the structure we still see today. Over the decades, the DAP has hosted generations of Durham Bulls baseball, served as a community gathering space, and gained national recognition through the film Bull Durham. The city's last significant investment at the site included a $4 million bond renovation in 2008. In 2012, the city entered into a management agreement with the Durham Bulls to operate and maintain the facility. That agreement was recently extended for another three years. The park was also home to North Carolina Central's baseball team. But they have not played at the DAP since 2021. The DAP's legacy is layered with stories of sport, culture, and community. And it's those stories that continue to shape our vision for the future. While the Durham Athletic Park holds deep historical and cultural value, its current use is limited and underwhelming compared to its potential. On average, the park is only active about 124 days per year, meaning it sits unused for roughly two-thirds of the calendar year. Of those active days, 91% are dedicated to baseball, leaving little room for other types of community programming or public access. The majority of baseball activity comes from travel leagues and youth tournaments, with Voyager Academy using the field for just seven home games each season. The current management agreement with the Durham Bulls includes maintenance and scheduling responsibilities. We are extremely appreciative of the partnership with the Bulls. However, the nature of programming focused almost exclusively on competitive baseball limits who can use the space and how it can be used. There was an incredible response to the community survey, over 2,600 participants. I'm sorry. Excuse me. Nearly half of the respondents were women, and 21% identified as people of color. We also heard from a wide range of age groups. Importantly, 20% of respondents reported household incomes below the area median, and 14% are identified as having a disability, helping ensure that the feedback we received reflects a broad spectrum of lived experiences. Community feedback made it clear. People want the DAP to remain public, inclusive, and free to access. There was strong opposition to new housing or large-scale development. Others raised concern about commercialization and environmental impact, including stormwater and impervious surfaces. The overall message is clear. The community supports revitalization, especially through adaptive reuse, open space, accessibility, and programming that centers community. As we heard from the community, people want more open space, more diverse amenities, and more inclusive programming, especially for youth and teens. These priorities are echoed in the city's own Durham Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Plan, which was adopted earlier this year. The timing of this feasibility study aligned closely with the development of that plan. The DPR plan calls for a larger diversity of amenities across the park system, a consistent, high-quality experience at all parks, and a focus on programming gaps, particularly for ages 12 and up. These themes, equity, access, and activation are exactly what we heard from the community throughout this process. So while this study is focused on one site, it's part of a much larger conversation about how we invest in public space around Durham. And with that, I'll now turn it over to Xena Howard of Perkins &amp; Will to walk us through best practices for open space activation and how those ideas are reflected in the vision scenarios for the DAP.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and Council. Thank you, Jackie. I'm Xena Howard. I'm the Managing Principal of Perkins &amp; Will. And I'm excited to really share with you how we began imagining the future of the DAP. So we didn't start with sort of buildings or amenities. We started with people. And we looked at the site through the lens of those who would actually use it, which are the families, the professionals, the youth, the older adults, the artists. These personas came directly from community engagement. We asked, how could each group move through the space? What would make them feel welcomed or even excluded? That led us to sort of a programming toolkit that we begin to look at. The slide that you see now is from the Trust for Public Lands Park Score Index, and it ranks Durham 97th of 100 populous US cities for park access. So this score is a measure of equity, proximity, and activation, not just acreage. The DAP sits within a growing network of public spaces, Central Park, the South Ellerby Creek Restoration, Old North Durham Park, and the Future Downtown Rail Trail, all within walking distance. Yet, the downtown park still lacks accessibility and high-quality green space. So at 5.4 acres, the DAP is small but strategic, a hub that can link people to nature, history, and each other. So we asked ourselves, as we look to benchmark, five acres really doesn't sound like much, but cities worldwide have turned these spaces into vibrant destinations. It's really not about size, in this case with the DAP, but how the space is organized and experienced. Some parks use distinct outdoor sort of rooms for play, water activities, and gathering, while others really center an open field or flexible lawn. The opportunity here is to design a layered, adaptable park that reflects Durham's identity and offers something for everyone. We looked across the triangle, and we can see small urban parks are redefining what's possible in tight spaces. In Cary and Raleigh, we saw parks that focused on daily activation, cultural heritage, and exclusive play. These visits were not about learning how they work, were about learning how they work through conversations with staff, also observing the use and studying the program and how they upkeep these parks. What stood out was intentional design, strong operations, and a clear sense of place. So this is proof that 5.4 acres can accomplish a lot when every element has purpose. To understand what's possible at the DAP, we studied peer projects across the region, some small in size, but big in impact. On the left here, you see Moore Square in Raleigh. This park is just four acres, but draws 500,000 visitors a year after a $12.5 million redesign that really focused on balancing history with modern amenities. Gibson Play Plaza at Dorthea Dix Park shows the power of partnership, with $73 million invested in inclusive, nature-based play that attracts 300,000 or more visitors a year. And to the far right, finally, is Cary Downtown Park. At 6.8 acres, this park transformed a vacant block into a vibrant civic hub with a $68.5 million investment and again, over $300,000 annual visitors. So these parks prove that impact is not necessarily about size. It's about design, programming, and community connection. That's the approach guiding the reimagining of the DAP. So let's look at what we have existing. The Durham Athletic Park has strong bones and a rich history. We see the historic ticket booth, the 1939 brick wall, and the brick-lined covert, all telling its story. These are all assets that are worth preserving here. But much of the infrastructure is aging. Since the last renovation in 2008, community needs have evolved. Today, the site feels gated and closed off with outdated circulation. There's that double perimeter fencing and very limited accessibility. Usage is low and focused on baseball, even as the surrounding neighborhood grows and seeks more inclusive play space. The challenge is clear. Preserve the park's character while adapting it for today's and tomorrow's needs. That's the balance the plan aims to achieve. Again, these images tell the story of a place with character, but also with where aging masonry roofs finishes signal the need for a full assessment to decide what to restore or replace. Fencing and layout further restricts access and visibility, limiting how people move through and connect with the park. Altogether, these conditions highlight a clear need for reinvestment, addressing both the physical infrastructure and the overall user experience. So we looked at a range of opportunities for the park. The feasibility study is about shaping the best future use of the DAP, guided by community input, research, and of course, the city's goals. From that process, we developed three conceptual approaches that explored different levels of change and of course, investment. These are not final design solutions, but illustrative frameworks to test what's possible. The first on the left is preservation, and this reflects what Jackie spoke about with the engagement, where 9% of the participants prefer minimal change by restoring existing facilities, improving accessibility, and addressing general safety needs. The middle option is transformation. And this reimagines the site by removing the stadium, opening it up to its surroundings, and creating a central lawn for recreation and events. And to the far right, the new development option explores bold partnerships and new civic uses that could expand the park's role in downtown. All three of these approaches strengthen connections to the nearby public spaces. We talked about the Durham Central Park, Ellerby Creek Restoration, the Future Rail Trail, and Old North Durham Park, while still honoring the DAP's history and ensuring the site's legacy is both remembered and renewed. So looking closer at the first option. This approach, like the other two to follow, keeps all the historic features intact. These elements serve as anchors for the site's identity and offer opportunities for interpretive storytelling. At the same time, this option introduces new amenities that support everyday use. This is the most modest of the three approaches in terms of physical change, but it delivers meaningful impact by restoring the park's legacy and making it more open and inclusive for the future. It introduces improvements like better lighting, infrastructure, clearer wayfinding, upgraded seating and pathways, small changes that make a big difference in how people move through and enjoy the space. These updates are designed to be sensitive to the site's character while making it more accessible, comfortable, and welcoming for all. This next view demonstrates the impact of community-centered programming. So here you see it introduces flexible spaces for events, performances, pop-up markets, uses that really reflect Durham's cultural vibrancy and invite people to make, to gather, and connect. These additions are low-impact and reversible, ensuring the park remains adaptable over time while still feeling familiar and rooted in its history. Finally, this approach deepens the preservation intent by weaving in storytelling and interpretation. You see here signage, public art, and design elements. It highlights the site's layered history from its industrial past to its role in the community today. The middle option is the transformation. This approach reshapes the site with sculpted berms that that frame a diamond-shaped central lawn, pretty much a nod to the historic use of the park as the baseball legacy. It preserves historic elements while introducing zones for play, rest, and civic use that invite movement and exploration. A new civic space strengthens the connection to the Durham Rail Trail and the Gear Street activities. This approach is all about layering experiences, again, creating spaces for relaxation, recreation, and community life. Walking and biking paths weave through the site, encouraging exploration, native planning, enhance ecology, and bring seasonal beauty, while shaded resting areas make the park more flexible and comfortable. Together, these elements tie nature, history, and accessibility into a cohesive and welcoming public space. Here, we imagine an elevated walkway that becomes the park's spine, offering views, circulation, and storytelling as you move through the site. The diamond-shaped lawn supports everything from casual play to concerts and festivals, while the historic ticket booth remains a key landmark. Art and interpretive elements celebrate Durham's identity, all together making this a space for both everyday use and special events. You see landscape and experience unite in a continuous, inclusive park. Native plantings will add color and support that local ecology while walking and biking paths invite movement. The Durham porch that you see here offers elevated views and storytelling opportunities. So this vision weaves performance, ecology, and community into one seamless landscape, welcoming both individual and quiet moments and shared experiences. This last approach is the new development, and it's the most transformative concept. It reimagines the DAP as a layered landscape organized around natural and civic zones. A diagonal path daylights a historic creek, creating a powerful ecological and storytelling feature that reconnects the site to its environmental roots. At the center of the scheme is Homebase Plaza, a new civic space for cultural events, community gatherings, and everyday use. This concept blends biodiversity, memory, and movement, turning the park into a dynamic space that reflects Durham's ecological and social history. This vision turns the DAP into a true multi-generational destination where teens, families, adults, and everyone in between can find something meaningful to do. Playscapes, biodiverse plantings, and flexible lawns support everything from casual recreation to large-scale events. Elevated walkways and civic spaces connect history, ecology, and community. Use stitching everything together from the park's past and also its future. But one of the most exciting things about this approach is the daylighting of Ellerby Creek, revealing a historic waterway and creating a living ecological corridor. This aligns with Durham's commitment to biophilic design and environmental stewardship. Here, we zoom in on Homebase Plaza, the civic heart of this concept. It's more than a gathering space. It's a hub for culture, learning, and everyday life. The daylight at Ellerby Creek becomes a living classroom, supporting biodiversity while managing stormwater and offering a tangible connection to Durham's natural systems. Just as important, this design extends the reach of Durham Central Park, creating a seamless connection between civic and green spaces and strengthening the walkable paths network. The final view brings it all together really here, a biodiverse, accessible, and connected park that reflects Durham's identity and aspirations. The elevated walkway ties together views, movement, storytelling, guiding visitors through a landscape rich with history and meaning. The central lawn and surrounding civic spaces support a wide range of uses, from everyday use to large-scale performances again. Every path, planting, and feature is intentional, telling part of Durham's story while creating a space that's welcoming, inclusive, and ready for the future. So here, wanted to look at how we've summarized an opinion of probable construction costs for each approach. So the one to the left, the preservation and restoration approach, which focuses on revitalization of existing structures, falls in the range of $48 to $68 million. The center option, the transformation, reimagines the site with sculpted landscapes and expanded public use, is estimated between $40 and $60 million. And finally, the new development scenario. This is the vision that introduces the ecological features. That ranges from $62 to $85 million. These values are based on conceptual design benchmarking and are not detailed estimates. Professional estimates would be developed through further design and engineering studies and of course, cost estimating. Thank you. I think we can take questions and any feedback that you have. Appreciate your time.
Thank you so much.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Xena and Jackie, for that information. My name is Stacy Poston, General Services Department, and want to talk a little bit further about as we were doing this work and doing engagement and involved with these high-level conceptual designs. At the same time, Marcus Manning and his team from the Durham Sports Commission was doing simultaneous work. And so he has some information he'd like to share as well as we begin this discussion. So with that, I'll invite Marcus to come up and talk to us today.
Thank you, thank you. Good afternoon. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, members of the council, Andrew Ferguson, and city staff. I just want to first thank you for your support and partnership that has allowed us as a sports commission to wrap our arms around the local Durham sports ecosystem and support and partner with our stakeholders. It's also allowed us to recruit and retain regional and national sporting events, partnering with our stakeholders and leveraging our facility assets that we have in Durham. And that's why I'm here today. The Durham Sports Commission sees a unique opportunity for a reimagined Durham Athletic Park. And I do want to thank Perkins &amp; Will and the city for their time, energy, and effort for their feasibility study. In recent months, we've been in several conversations with potential tenants, three potential tenants, one being a new professional league that has expressed an interest in Durham. That has led to multiple conversations and multiple site visits to Durham, including a tour of Durham Athletic Park. We've had conversations about what Durham Athletic Park could be, potential upgrades, and also the significant interest in a downtown footprint. We've talked about broadcast capabilities at the park. We've talked about expanded seating, VIP experiences, and overall, again, what the Durham Athletic Park could be. We've had conversations with the Regional Baseball Academy. They've expressed significant interest, seeing it as a multipurpose-type facility. They continue to experience growth and expansion even into the softball place. They've thought about using it for 10 months all around, including wanting to have synthetic turf, to have multiple games throughout the year, camps, skill development, and leadership development. The final is North Carolina Central Softball. And as it stands right now, since 2022, they've had over 50 home dates in Cary. We've had conversations with NCCU about the opportunity to bring softball to Durham, where it belongs, here in our backyard. So as we think about these three potential tenants and more, it really allows us to think about Durham Athletic Park as an outdoor, multipurpose venue. One that can host major sporting events but also non-sporting events. It allows us to think about a facility and a venue in downtown Durham that can host professional, collegiate, youth, and high school sporting activities. It allows us to really think, what if we have synthetic turf? What if we create additional space in Durham Athletic Park that allows for more sports to be played, like soccer, flag football, tackle football potentially, creating those youth opportunities as we've talked about before? We also talked about the idea of having a third-party facility and venue operator. One, it could lead to potential capital investments. And let's define that. We mentioned changing from natural grass to synthetic turf, but it also can expand the seating, as we've mentioned, and VIP experiences, as we've mentioned. Broadcast capability along with high-speed Wi-Fi and also potentially a video board. It also can serve as a connector to the surrounding communities in downtown. It also can serve as a recruiter for major events, sporting events, and also non-major sporting events. A value add to the fan and guest experience. And then finally, a consistent performance evaluation of the facility and the venue to think about the return on investment for Durham and the Durham community. And I'll end with this. 96 days, the last 96 days, we've spent multiple site visits to Durham, national, regional, local. Championship preparation, as we get ready to host a conference championship next Saturday, a national championship the weekend after that, and multiple state championships. And then finally, as we all know, facility discussions. And what these type of assets mean to Durham. We understand it could be a community asset. We understand that it expands opportunities for informal participation. We also understand the opportunity of revenue generation and it's serving as potentially a significant economic impact driver as we know, as we utilize other facility assets across Durham and the recruitment of regional and national sporting events. I want to thank you for your time. I want to thank the members of the council for your support and your partnership. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, thank you all for that. And remind me your name, Perkins &amp; Will. Xena. You see, you didn't have to rush. I was outside when you were coming in, and she was bawling. She was running so hard. Thank you all so much. I'm going to call up a few speakers at a time. First, Erin Kaufman. After Erin, Susan Amy, my friend Bob Ashley.
Thank you so much. My name's Erin Kaufman. I'm the Executive Director of Durham Central Park, and it's my honor to speak to you today in support of expanding accessible community green space in downtown Durham. A few months ago, right here, the updated Durham Central Park designs, which we're fondly calling the DCP Green Print, were presented to you as part of the DPR Comprehensive Plans, and you unanimously approved those plans a few weeks later. As a nonprofit, Durham Central Park, Inc. works closely with Durham Parks and Rec to manage, program, improve, and fundraise for the park so that everyone in Durham can enjoy it. We embarked on the update of the park plans at this time because over the past decade, downtown Durham has seen extraordinary growth and development. And as a result, Durham Central Park has become the central outdoor gathering space for our community. Each week, thousands of people from all across Durham and beyond come to the park, visit the park, and not just for relaxation and recreation, but for the farmer's market, concerts, community events, and so much more. Just a few weeks ago, over 5,000 people gathered on the great lawn in the park for the No Kings Rally. People love this place. I'm telling you this to demonstrate how much our community yearns for gathering space downtown. We have a wonderful 5 acres in Durham Central Park. We're thrilled to be embarking on the needed improvements and upgrades of this space with our partners in the city and individual donors to make it a more usable and resilient space. But the fact of the matter is, 5 acres is not enough for the city anymore. While Durham Central Park is able to provide a beloved third space for our community, we're not able to do it all. One of the main pieces of feedback that we get from people about the park is that they want a bigger park. The other is that visitors find beauty in the park's lack of barriers. The reimagination of the DAP is an inspired way to provide both of those things to our community without placing strain on already tapped resources. Transforming a fenced-in baseball field into an accessible community green space that is an extension of, or at least connected to Durham Central Park, would provide people with the additional space to gather that they want. Because of the constraints of the development on the park's border, we can't physically expand that space. But any of the scenarios that were presented today would be a huge asset to downtown Durham and the community. By opening up more green space for play, respite, recreation, and events, spaces like Durham Central Park become less burdened by the wear and tear of hundreds of thousands of use of downtown visitors each year. Reimagining the DAP would offer downtown and the city a large, a great swath of opportunity to enjoy our beautiful city. And we are excited to support green investment in downtown Durham. Thank you very much.
Only one problem. I counted 7,000 or more.
Oh, yeah. That's what I said, over.
Don't short us, all right?
There's a lot of feet that go through that park, and people love it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
He literally was out there counting.
I really was.
It was crazy.
Proudly.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, City Council members and city staff. My name is Susan Amy. I'm here as a representative of Durham Next and Discover Durham to comment in support of us further exploring Option 1 together. And there are several reasons I believe that's the right direction. We all know, from our experience living here, as well as from the community input that fed Durham's Destination Master Plan, that Durham residents have a deep love for preserving our history. The work Perkins &amp; Will did affirms that for the Durham Athletic Park. 44% thought it was important for people from all over Durham and beyond to visit and enjoy the site. And that will also provide the greatest foot traffic to support surrounding hospitality and entertainment businesses, creating the most economic impact for Durham and additional tax revenue. This council, and many others, have been eager to see the private sector provide financial support for important projects in Durham. And the Sports Commission has already been in touch with potential partners who are interested in doing just that. This is a once-only opportunity to bring a beloved community asset back to life. There's much more work to be done. And Discover Durham, the Durham Sports Commission, and Durham Next would be thrilled to partner with the city to explore and develop the proposal that will have the largest positive impact for the community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Amy? Next, Mr. Ashley.
Thank you very much. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, council members. It's been 85 years since the Durham Athletic Park was built, and it's seen a lot of history. And our friends from Perkins &amp; Will touched on a couple of these, but I want to emphasize them. It was designed by George Watts Carr, an architect who is responsible for many, many treasured buildings in Durham, paid for by John Sprint Hill. Paid for by John Sprint Hill, another industrial leader. Durham High School played football there, some during the thirties, forties, and fifties. Negro League games were played there, often outdrawing the white teams that played there. In November eleventh, nineteen fifty, Jackie Robinson, his All-Stars, played an exhibition game at the DAP. Players included Roy Campanella, Don Newcombe of the Dodgers, Larry Dobie, Luke Easter of the Cleveland Indians. It was a memorable evening, and it was notably, I believe, the first integrated baseball game officially in Durham. The Bulls have been around since the early century, ebbing and flowing. By nineteen forty, the team had become a farm team for the Brooklyn Dodgers. World War Team put a, World War Two put a strain on baseball, as so much else. But the team, after folding in nineteen forty-four, reestablished in nineteen forty-five as the Red Sox Farm Club in the Class C Carolina League. By nineteen forty-eight, they'd switched to the Tigers. But in nineteen eighty, Miles Wolf developed an expansion franchise in the Carolina League. Farm team for the Atlanta Braves named once again the Durham Bulls. And then in nineteen eighty-eight, need I remind anyone in Durham? Bull Durham embedded the Bulls in the national conscious. I happen to believe it was the best baseball club of all time, but we can debate that another time. The Bulls became one of the most popular franchises in the nation. All that history is worth remembering, worth preserving. The park stands as a reminder of that to anyone living here, visiting here. Preserving the park will be a visible reminder of all of that and more to come. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Based on your comments, that I can listen to all day, just the history, and I appreciate that so much. Want to call up Nicole Thompson next, and I see Mayor Nick Tennyson in the audience. I'm going to ask that she come up after her, if you will.
Good afternoon. Nicole Thompson, President and CEO of Downtown Durham Incorporated. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members, City Manager. The importance of the Foster Corcoran Blackwell Corridor for downtown is well-established. It is a major spine through downtown and has been identified in two thousand, the two thousand Durham Master Plan and the twenty fifteen Durham, Downtown Durham Smart Vision Plan, as needing to be a safe and inviting corridor linking key destinations and unique areas of downtown. Along this corridor, you can find the Bull Stadium, DPEC, ATC, CCB Plaza, Major the Bull, Carolina Theater, Durham Central Park, and the historic Durham Athletic Park. We are excited about the current projects that are moving forward. The Carolina Theater's one-hundred-year anniversary, the Durham Central Park Visioning Plan, the Bike Facilities Two Plan, the Durham Rail Trail, and a South Ellerby Creek restoration. In addition, this part of downtown has seen a tremendous amount of growth. Over fourteen hundred residential units, seven multifamily developments have been built in this area since twenty eighteen and have come online. Currently, eighty-six businesses call this area home, and twenty-five of them have opened since twenty twenty-three. So we are excited about the Durham History Athletic Park is getting some much-needed attention and are excited to hear of the tremendous public engagement that has occurred. I think we can all agree that at its current level of activity, the historic Durham Athletic Park is operating at far less than what it could be, and in fact, is dragging far behind other key assets in downtown that are seeing a rebirth and renewed vitality. We know that the reimagining of this space will only support the ongoing growth and vibrancy occurring in this area and has been specifically called out in the Durham Downtown Blueprint, which you will be, you will hear more about at your next council meeting. In the Downtown Durham Blueprint, however, which we, which will come before you at your next session, it highlights the Durham Athletic Park as a key opportunity to develop this site that will benefit the community and connect to adjacent open spaces. Because downtown has experienced significant growth in recent years, the Durham Athletic Park remains a significant opportunity to provide a center for recreation and culture. Once complete, this historic landmark promises to be an important designation for residents and visitors alike. So it is imperative that we begin to work immediately so that this site no longer sits dormant for two hundred and forty-one days a year, but that it is attracting activity and excitement and engagement year-round. Durham needs this site to be re-managed, re-imagined. Downtown needs this site to become more robust to encourage the countless other businesses that want to call this area home, and the current eighty-six businesses I mentioned earlier need the pedestrian activity that a more robust site would bring. The city, working with Perkins and Will, has brought some great thoughts and ideas centered around the robust community engagement. From this visioning, the Durham Sports Commission has stepped boldly forward with a offer, to offer viable options and potential partners to enhance this space. DDI is supportive of the ideas that have been brought forward, and we are very interested in the tangible concepts shared by the Durham Sports Commission. The ability to bring sports of all levels is something that we need. I ask that you support this and let us continue this conversation.
All right, thank you. Another historian of engagement, Mayor, former Mayor Nick Tennyson.
Thank you, and I'm keenly aware of my resemblance to the ghost of Christmas past here. This is a seasonal reference, some of you may get. This has been a very exciting session for me to listen to. And, and as I listen to it, one of the things that occurs to me is the concept that once you've made a sale, you should stop selling. So I won't attempt to sell anymore. But that's also true for the fact that we've got, we have had in our laps, dumped a landmark, a cultural icon that, that we should try to preserve, in my view. We should try to preserve it to maintain the link that people have established with Durham and the concept of baseball and all of the good things about that. They have a baseball stadium, a baseball field in the middle of a cornfield in Iowa that people drive hours to go see with nothing else around it. And we have a, a much better field in the middle of an area of just a tremendous range of options to, around which one could build a visit. So I was thrilled to hear the comments about the potential of people that might want to use it. I'm disappointed. I mean, my own sons played down there and a couple of, at the time, the, the school system was using it from time to time. I really think that what's before you is an exciting series of choices. I hope that you will preserve personally. I hope that you'll preserve that connection to the baseball. But this is a win-win, 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 win. So thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the time and all the best.
Thank you, Mayor. Next, I have Rifka Gordon. After Rifka, I have Julia. This.
Hello, and thank you so much for giving me the opportunity of speaking with you today. My name is Rifka Gordon. I live at two-one-four Hunt Street, the Vega condominium. I live on the northeast corner, which means that I look directly down onto Durham Central Park and the skate park. I am a recent member of the Durham Central Park Board of Directors, but today I speak with you as an engaged Durham, downtown Durham resident. I'm also a grandmother of a five-year-old who lives in Durham and a two-and-a-half-year-old who lives in western North Carolina and comes to visit frequently. Our family loves Durham Central Park. We see and we hear Durham Central Park all day, every day. Several times a week, we take our walks and we continue on to the Durham Athletic Park. Most of the time, no one is using it. Sometimes there's a baseball game, and that's really fun to see. But as I see it, developing a plan that brings together the five acres of Durham Central Park with the five acres of the Durham Athletic Park into a multi-use park with green space, recreation of all kinds, event space, and so on, would provide our residents and the people who visit Durham with a park that everyone could enjoy. Just imagine, a ten-acre park with picnic areas, a water playground, space for sports like basketball, bocce, open areas for creative uses that really use the wowed areas along the creek. I watch every day how people use the great lawn at Durham Central Park creatively. And especially with my grandsons, I'm aware of the seriously overused small play area children, for children. We need more park. I know Durham can think bigger and provide more for everyone with a ten-acre park in downtown. I ask that we take a step back and consider how much a ten-acre Durham Park would enhance our city. Let's retain the Bulls' wonderful history, but look to the future. Let's imagine and plan for a ten-acre historic Durham Central Park that will benefit all Durhamites as well as the people who visit our exciting city. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Julia.
Hello. I'm Julia Lazier. I'm the Membership and Programs Coordinator for Preservation Durham. And today, I am here on behalf of the organization to express Preservation Durham's support of the Durham Athletic Park, of the preservation of the Durham Athletic Park. So we support opportunities presented in the preservation and restoration option, but we still have a lot of concerns and questions about what that looks like, and we ask to be involved in future phases. The second and third options should not be considered as they propose significant changes to the Durham Athletic Park, one of the city's most iconic and culturally significant landmarks. As Durham considers options for its future, community feedback makes it clear that preservation must remain central, not minimized, as plans move forward. The focus should be on enhancing and investing in what already exists, not replacing it with something new. In fact, that was what was identified in the survey. The survey findings underscore this priority at forty-four percent, specifically mentioning and emphasizing the need to preserve the unique features of the DAP. That was more than any other priority in the survey. Yet, the recent feasibility study treats historic preservation as a secondary competing goal rather than an essential one. It was very little mentioned in the presentation we saw as well, and we want to make sure we highlight that. Preservation should not be framed as a trade-off with public use or open space. The DAP is the foundation that gives the site and surrounding Foster and West Gier Street Historic District their meaning and identity. The district has already lost much of its working-class character over the past decade, making it all the more important to protect what remains. Our issue with the study, beyond minimizing the public's strong support for preservation, is the absence of a clearly defined future use for the site. The DAP is already a unique historic venue within an urban historic district that offers endless opportunities for programming as-is. Is it underutilized? Sure, but that issue can be addressed through an improved management agreement and stronger programming, not a multimillion-dollar redesign. In fact, this was the first that we heard about the Sports Commission's proposal, and we think it's a great idea for a future use of the park, of the DAP. Could it be more accessible? Of course, but those barriers should be first identified, then addressed through sensitive, limited upgrades to existing infrastructure, infrastructure and improving access. Where's the analysis of what's not working under the current operating agreement with the Durham Bulls? Why not focus on practical improvements like bathroom, lighting, or sound upgrades that would make smaller community events like concerts, movie nights, or recreational leagues more feasible? These are the kinds of questions that must be answered before pursuing major capital investments. True preservation of the DAP goes beyond maintaining its physical structures. It requires a thoughtful plan for its future use, one that serves Durham's community and honors its history for generations to come. Preservation Durham urges the city to acknowledge that historic preservation was a top community priority identified in the survey and make it the guiding focus moving forward. Ensure any future redevelopment or redesign retains the DAP's defining historic features. Pursue local landmark designation or commit to submitting future design plans for voluntary review by the Historic Preservation Commission and prioritize activation and access through creative management and partnership agreements rather than a costly overhaul that risks eroding the site's historic integrity. Thank y'all.
Almost auctioneer status. All right, we have one more speaker. All right. Nick Johnson.
Thank you so much for having me. Thank you for being here and for the work that you do to try and make Durham a wonderful place. And for that lovely preservation, uh, presentation. I'm a big fan of Preservation Durham. I'm also a recipient of multiple of their awards, including their highest preservation award. I've worked in preservation for years, and I think it's a very worthwhile thing to do. However, I don't think we should do what was just suggested by Preservation Durham. I think that option two and three, looking forward to the use of the park and also incorporating preservation into some aspects of the use of the park will be a far more effective use in, in creating what we all want, which is a usable and then used space in downtown. I've, I've gone to ballpark, I've gone to games at the DAP since I was a child. I have a great love for it. I also operate the rickhouse, which is right on the edge of Wright Field, and I get to see how unused it is. I think transforming that space into largely what it currently is, a baseball field, and then adding some small things would be a shame and an opportunity when we could both highlight the history of that site and also create something which is in modern-day life in downtown Durham, usable, attractive, and exciting to everyone around. That's really all I have to say. Thanks for your time.
Thank you so much. All right. That was really good, really good. Nick is a friend that.
I didn't curse at all.
Did not curse. I was nervous up here, like, oh, boy. Good to see you, man. All right. Thank you to all the speakers here. I remember when this first came up. I had somehow missed the fact that we were starting the feasibility study and my phone blew up. And the way information goes in our community, why are you making them do a feasibility study on this? Nobody needs a feasibility study. And they were totally misunderstanding what the feasibility study was. They thought we were turning it into, turning it into a feasibility study. And I was like, that's not a thing. It's a, it's an action. But, you know, it happens. Here we are. Colleagues, comments. Speaker.
Yeah, just a few questions. First of all, thank you so much for the work, all of you at Perkins and Will and the work that's, that's gone into this from, from staff and from the consultant team. I've got a couple of questions here. First of all, can we just get a reminder, kind of the origins of the feasibility study? Where, where did this, remind us where this came from? I think for, for that occasion of everyone. Second, can you just explain a little bit? I know that those numbers for the costs are extremely rough, but can you just explain a little bit about why the preservation/restoration option almost seemed comparable to the new development scenario? And then my third question is, in terms of opening up the ballpark, how would we imagine there being the flexibility of, on most days, people could access the grounds, could walk through the ballpark, but it would still, we would still have the option of, of closing it for concerts, events, sports games, things like that?
Stacy Poston, we're just negotiating who's going to take which question. So I'll take the first two. So the feasibility study was conceived when Mayor Shul was here, early on. We received some direction and some thoughts around how to, how to approach that community asset, what we ought to, what we ought to do with it. And there was a little thinking around soccer at that time. And so we've been thinking about doing that work. And so in the last year, we've been able to get to that and engage the community and their thinking, and now we're presenting that information to you. So that's just the inception of those activities. Question number two was around the cost estimations, the sort of early cost estimates. And I think that preservation and restoration can be a fairly expensive thing. And so I think the reason you see that first concept being less expensive than the transformation concept is that we would have to take and renovate some of those existing facilities, which can be sometimes a little more expensive. And so when you see the cost estimate sort of for the, for the first preservation and restoration, that's why you see that number's a little bit higher.
Okay, so we're, when we're talking about preservation, restoration, we're talking about kind of a full, bringing it fully up, up to a high-quality upgrade.
Sure, so right now, the restrooms might be underneath the grandstand seats, and you might want to bring those out from underneath that, that area so that they were more accessible, for instance. And so how you approach that, what you would do with the electricity and the plumbing and sort of all of those types of things, leaving other, other assets in place that sort of are more historic elements that you might think about in that context. So I think you're moving, instead of having sort of a clean slate, you're moving pieces around. So sometimes that can be a little more expensive. And then with regard to number three, I'm going to pass that to Zina Howard. Thank you.
Thanks for your question. I'm going to restate number three. I think you said, how can, how can essentially accommodate both uses? The use as a athletics team and also this. The use as an athletics team and also this cultural use. So, yes, as an athletic, professional athletics, you do have to have certain things, like the perimeter fencing, but we have ways of doing that that doesn't look like some of the images I showed you earlier, where it essentially looks like, almost like a prison yard, for lack of a better term. So, our approach, if we go this way, and we're equally excited about what the Durham Sports Commission is talking about, would be to design it so that it accommodates that without the physical look of a barrier for the week or on days, could be the weekends, when it's not used for professional sports activities. So, I think we would be excited about exploring that in the future, but it can do both uses, I think.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you so much. I actually, I used to play baseball here when I went to Durham School of the Arts. We actually got booted out by North Carolina Central. And also, the Durham Dragons Softball League used to play here, so if you were looking for more historians on the site. I think with this, one thing that this shows is just how many urban and planning problems can be solved with great design, and I think that's what we're seeing. And really, all of these designs, we're seeing, you know, how do we take a stadium that has so much cultural, culturally-rich history, is such an iconic Durham identity, and upgrading it in a variety of ways that can maintain the existing use or transform it. And so, great design is something that we should never overlook. There is obviously a lot of sentiment, I think, for people in our community around the stadium. Many people who live in Durham today used to go to baseball games there when the Durham Bulls played there. A lot of folks, sometimes this is a great place, one of the best places to see a baseball game. BYOB can just walk in and watch the travel teams, and just a few years ago, you know, watch North Carolina Central. So, I think it's such an important space in our city and located right downtown. With regard to the three different scenarios, you know, I do want to acknowledge, I think, the vision around scenarios two and three, particularly three with the daylighting of Elraby Creek. Obviously, daylighting all of our creeks is so important. I do have a preference for scenario one, and I wanted to ask something, following up from Preservation Durham's comments, of what would it look like to evolve the site? What would it look like to take some initial steps to opening up the site a little bit more so that we can, almost sort of a pop-up urbanism style, we can get a vision of what it might look like without kind of going zero to sixty right away? Do we have any ideas or thoughts about temporary changes and modifications to the site that would accomplish at least some of the, initially, some of these goals that we're reaching for as we move toward any of the additional three scenarios?
So, I think there are lots of options here. I think one of the things to think about is, what is the impact on the turf and the grass, right? As we start to think about moving from the activities that are happening there and the contracts that we might have in existence for the current space and use, and what it might look like if we were to do something like a beer fest on that grass, and what an artificial turf solution might look like, and what the options might be for funding something like that. I think there are an array of solutions here, and so, I think this is a good conversation to sort of start the thinking and to think about what appropriate next steps might be. If we got some direction around this, we could think about phasing and costs and come back with a more strategic plan around something like that.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Freeman, please.
Thank you. Just following up, I just want to kind of build off of that comment and just say that I know this area becomes just a mudbowl if you get too many people stamping on that grass. And so, mindful of that, it will need to be turf in order for it to continue to be used more than, or over that 241 days, you know, like, so, I mean, that's a given. I wanted to hear from, also from Preservation Durham, because I know you mentioned moving the bathrooms. I want to be mindful, like, if the bathrooms were used by Jackie Robinson, I want to be careful that we just don't dismiss all of the history that is included at the site. And so, I am leaning heavily towards that option one, just knowing that the history of, I mean, just even adding today with the first actual integrated game in Durham happening at that site, how much of that history have we actually documented? And then, how much of it are we trying to work around? Because even if you were to, because I would like to see some type of a facility there to house some of that information, noting like, there's, I mean, I can't help, I got to address the best baseball movie, because it's A League of Their Own. But I do want to say that Bull Durham and its cultural, like, iconic attachment to Durham is similar to, like, the hate, I mean, the, what's the new movie that came out with? Oh, my gosh. It just went. No, it was The Schools. It was the Anne Atwater one. The Best of Enemies. And so, knowing, like, those pieces in our community, it's important to tie them together and make sure that that, so, if there is a way to make this a historic baseball park, you know, like, the historic museum, historic baseball museum and park, that is more of the option-one part that I would love to hear more about. And I don't think that the cost does feel very inflated, just mindful that, you know, unless you're doing some huge structures, I don't know if you get to that number. And so, what the phases looks like in that conversation, the turf, then the, like, the building and not moving the bathrooms, but creating new bathrooms, yeah, that kind of detailed list would be helpful to try to lay out what the history that we want to capture on the site looks like.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Well, this is a fun and rich conversation. Like Councilmember Baker, I have played baseball in the DAP, so you guys, you guys know me as the guy throwing the baseball in that video before Councilman Dink, so I have a strong bias of seeing baseball played in the DAP. I do want to appreciate Bob Ashley's history lesson about the DAP is really helpful. Bob, you actually, one thing you left out, and I'm so glad Councilmember Freeman mentioned A League of Their Own, your favorite baseball movie, because remember when that movie came out, there was like a barnstorming team, the Silver Bullets came and played in the DAP? And I got to play in that game against them. So, this is very near and dear to my heart. Look at them, that's cool. So, I have a couple of questions for Perkins &amp; Will, actually, about the study, and thank you for the work there and for the inquiry and what else we could do in those five acres and the sort of thoughts about the three scenarios. My first question is in terms of the engagement. So, like, as part of that, did you talk to the other stakeholders, like, the baseball community, the folks that use that? Were they part of that survey?
When you say the baseball community, are you...
Are you folks that are using the field now or that may use the field or that are part of, you know, the whole baseball community in Durham?
We have, we receive, so, part of what we showed you of the 2,600 people, that was mostly community-rooted, and of course, professional people that are member, in the community, members of those organizations, were participated in that. But in terms of formally engaging with particular organizations, no, I don't think we did that, and you may have more to add.
Yeah. So, we engaged with the youth council, we engaged with Central Park School in adjacency. We did a number of community organizations, Latinx community, those types of entities, Durham Bulls themselves. So, we had Durham Sports Commission, so there was a number of engagement, sort of, touchpoints that were sort of in that baseball realm, whether it's sort of from youth to the baseball community itself. But did we interview necessarily, like, a youth baseball team itself? No, no, we did not do that.
I guess my point is that, you know, I mean, I'm a big supporter of, like, the skatepark downtown, and I think if you ask folks, like, hey, what could we do with the skatepark? We'd probably get a lot of ideas there. But I think keeping it a skatepark is also important.
Yeah, yeah.
I guess my second question was, like, how much, like, what kind of interaction you had with DPR as part of this? Because I think you mentioned that the DPR Conference of System Plan, how much do you sort of work with them once? Because in terms of, like, need for fields, for example, for baseball fields, so...
Yeah, on this early feasibility study, we, obviously, we had input from them, but really, it's about laying out the large vision, and as soon as we tunnel in, we expect there to be significantly more engagement with DPR, as well as with this, you know, this sort of second approach, and your question, Commissioner Baker, about the dual use of this potential site. So, we anticipate a lot more future engagement. But for now, the support of this as in terms of recreation is huge.
Yeah. I will say, I mean, because, you know, in the, and again, thanks to Director Wade Walcott is here, I serve on the Recreation Advisory Committee, so, and we've been through that Conference of System Plan very carefully. So, just a couple of things to note, so, that survey that they, and they did a tremendous engagement as part of that Conference of System Plan, one of the findings was that baseball ranks as one of the top amenities or facilities most important to households. Baseball was ranked high as a top priority for investment from folks that responded, and also among the programs and activities most important to households, baseball ranked number four. So, there's definitely a lot of interest in baseball fields. And so, what I want to make sure is, as we're thinking about new uses for the DAP, that we're also not, that we don't sort of miss the fact that there is a need for baseball fields here, and this is, you know, a lead baseball field. So, yes, I'm a big fan, as I think a couple of my colleagues have mentioned, I'm a big fan of option one, and I appreciate Marcus Manning being here from the Sports Commission, which sounds like some really interesting options for actually activating the DAP. The idea of having potentially, you know, the DBAP with the Bulls on one end of downtown and the DAP renovated on the other end with, sort of, activated fully as we envisioned, to me, is a really exciting opportunity, so I look forward to that. But I certainly support option one. The preservation piece is the most, for me, exciting one.
Yeah, thank you. Keep swinging.
Yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate everyone's comments and the presentation. I will have to say, I think I knew when Councilmember Freeman shook her head about the best baseball movie, I was like, I know which one's her favorite. It has Madonna, all right? You know, anyway, not that, you know, Susan's random.
Tom Hanks, right?
Yeah, I mean, you know, anyway, but I understand the deep love. I think I was speaking to somebody, and I was like, you can go to the green room still. It's one of the only ones that still exists of that time and still around. And I am going to make fun of my councilmember colleague, Councilmember Riss, because he is really actually insane about baseball. I don't know where we were, and the minute he pivoted to talk to somebody, I was like, oh, he's totally talking about baseball. And that's exactly what was going on. I think that, for me, the one that, I really like the idea of just activating the space. I don't really care how we do it. I'm not a baseball person. I totally understand why people want to preserve it, want to keep that rich tradition, the history and everything like that. I just want to see people using it. I think that we have had some success. When Sylvan Esso played a few years ago, those tickets sold out very quickly. I don't like driving to Raleigh to go to Red Hat at all, ever. So, I think that there's a lot of potential, and I think that seems like there's some cohesion happening between activating that space, some potentials that the Sports Commission is mentioning, that we can, you know, activate the space, make it connect well to Durham Central Park, really have a community asset that's well-used and well-loved, and that's pretty much where I'm at. I love the idea of the third option, but I think that, you know, I've been on this council long enough where you think you make an idea, you make a decision, and then the next meeting, and all of a sudden, you have really intense baseball fans, you know, lining up and really mad at you, and you just weren't aware that there was that much passion. So, I think that the, just activating the space as much as possible, it is for sports, for festivals, for music, I think the idea of switching from grass to turf, because it's long been a longstanding issue, why we haven't been able to activate the space. I do appreciate the whole conversation around the fencing and figuring out how it comes down, because I don't like that visual barrier at all. And I look forward to being able to use it in a few years, and hopefully, it'll happen quickly. That would be my only other. I don't want to be, you know, like, even more white in the hair here when we all get to celebrate and use a pretty beloved downtown space. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor President.
Thank you, colleagues. The greatest baseball movie was the Bad News Bears. Dating myself. You got to, they got to at least get honorable mention. This is a really exciting, I do want to also just thank you for alluding to, there was Jubilee Gardens in London, is one of the parks you looked at. I have fond memories of Jubilee, it's Jubilee Garden when they redid it, I think in the early 2000s to honor Queen Elizabeth, but the gardens were first built in 1977, so I have fond memories of that park in London. So, it was good to see you as one of our conversation partners. I want to ask a couple of questions and do some kind of expectation management on this particular site. I think this site is as important as the 505 site, I think, and a lot of the same arguments that we hear and a lot of the same sensibilities are applicable to both. There are people who feel just as passionately about the Milton Smalls Building as they do this ballpark, and I want to hold those two in tension. So, it's important that we get this right. I want to drill down a little bit on some of the engagement we did and the way we asked the question, because asking the question, what do you want to see there, is one thing. Asking a person, what do you think we should include with the baseball field, is another question. And the fact that the Sports Commission, it's good to see you, Senator Manning, the Sports Commission had prime real estate in the actual presentation, as opposed to one of the folk kind of champing at the bit, I think, kind of, it at least places an emphasis on which one we're leaning towards, which is, of course, number one, with, just by virtue of their juxtaposition in this presentation, the way it was set up, which is fine to me. And I think that, you know, it's interesting to say 44% preserving the DAP's unique features while commemorating Durham's baseball history. Doesn't necessarily say that they want baseball there, it's commemorating history and preserving the features, maybe one thing. But if you add 28% space activation and 28% open green space together, that's 56% of folk who may or may not be interested in having baseball there as the primary anchoring feature. So, I just want to drill down on some of the way we're framing the discussion. It's interesting if the, and this will lead to my questions from the Sports Commission, if a professional team becomes a tenant there, that's a dictating tenant. I once tried to turn the field at Yankee Stadium into an open space. It didn't go well. I don't, you need to stay in your seats, because I wanted to go on the field, and they frowned upon that kind of thing. Because, you know, professional team, there are standards for maintaining the grounds, and they dictate not only architecturally but usage. So, we're looking at now an open space that will not be open all of the time, where you can just walk through Central Park or walk through other areas in our city. So, I want to hold that intention as well as we look at what we do with this space. If it is primarily dictated for baseball, then, which would be fine, but we need to be honest about what that will mean, even if we try and do a multi-space kind of usage, what that will mean in terms of unfettered access or 24/7 access for folk. So, we need to talk about that. And I also want to talk, if you would, Senator Manning, what, Central used to play there. So, I want to talk about why they're not playing there anymore and what improvements, what we will do to attract clients and what clients we attract. Because if we're on the trajectory of trying to attract folk to use the field for sports, then by definition, we're already kind of telling folk what we're going to do with it. But I want to honor, you know, we don't want to spend money on engagement knowing that it's going to be baseball, so we should just say that, if that's going to be the case. But I do want to just get a little clarity as to why they were there, why they're not there.
Sure, thank you. Marcus Manning, Executive Director, Durham Sports Commission. North Carolina Central's baseball team was cut, and so, they no longer exist, and so, that's the reason why they're not there. So, just wanted to clarify that, and sorry, I did mention that earlier. NCCU softball team is the program right now that competes for their home games in Cary. And so, just to repeat, since 2022, 50, over 50 home dates have been scheduled in Cary. And so, right now, that's where, that's where they play. And so, as mentioned, we would love to get them back to Durham.
Could the current facility host them now, or would they have to go through upgrades in order to accommodate NCCU softball programs?
Yeah, two specific things. One is just the mound, right? And so, as you... And so as you, the mound is static. And what I mean by that, you can't, you can't move. And if you try to move it, there are significant costs to that. Number two, you need a portable fence for softball dimensions. And right now, we don't have that at Durham Athletic Park. So, and then number three, this is, this is where the synthetic turf comes in. The more and more you allow different tenants and users, as mentioned, it could become a, a source of, a source where the, the field itself is worn down and not playable, suitable, especially at the collegiate level.
Yeah, which informs my point and my concern that it, as much as we may want it to be all things to all people, I just want to be very honest and transparent with folk that, that by definition, if, if, if we set a certain trajectory, it's going to have a defining effect on the facility and its accessibility. I mean, if, if we're listing Central as a potential tenant for softball, and you've just enumerated some of the things that softball needs, then if we're on that path, and again, I'm not poo-pooing any of the ideas, I'm just simply saying for, for the sake of being transparent with our constituents and, and our residents and neighbors, that certain choices will inform down the road just how accessible this place is as an open space, an activated space. And we know that, but I just want to make sure we put it out there. Because sometimes when we've done engagement, I think we've created expectations that, you know, folk have, if it's, if we do two and three, it's not going to look, we're not going to have stands up there for, for fans to sit and watch baseball. And I think sometimes in our engagement, we've created expectations, knowing full well that we already know the trajectory that we want it to be on and be on. And I just want to save ourselves some, some anxiety, you know, down the road, if we know we're headed towards preserving, take care, preserving, uh, baseball. So yeah, and I, and, and again, the fact that the Sports Commission was actually part of the main presentation, I think if I were a resident just watching, that would suggest to me that, you know, potentially, there may be a preference already here for where it's going and what it may look like, which is fine, but I, I just want to put that out there to folk. But this is exciting. This is, this is going to be one of those generational, you know, decisions that we make as a city, and I'm excited about what we do there and, and getting it right, as with 505. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for a great presentation. Good to see you.
You too.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you. I wanted to acknowledge Mayor Proton's comment about the inclusion of the Sports Commission in the presentation and be transparent about that. The, the circumstances that led to that were, were pretty straightforward. When we began the study a year ago, there were no active proposals, no one was in active discussions with the city about, about new uses or potential uses that were far enough along that seemed credible. The study began with a true sort of blank slate approach, and it ends with a true blank slate approach. About two months ago, the Sports Commission came to city leadership to let us know that they had been approached with what seemed to be credible and serious offers and potential uses for the facility. And so as we brought this forward, the, the question I had to wrestle with was, was that meaningful information that council would want to have in selecting a, one of the options that you'd be asked to consider today? I felt that, given that the Sports Commission works on behalf of the city and doing this type of work, that it was information I wanted to put in front of you. I do want to indicate staff does not bring a preferred recommendation, but it felt like the developments that the Sports Commission were made aware of was actionable information that the council would want to have regardless of whether or not you, you wanted to pursue that or not. So it was, it was my choice to add them to the presentation so council would have that awareness. But I would, I want to reiterate that we are, we are neutral on the options. Felt like it was information that, that would be important for council to receive. Thank you.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that clarification, and, and I want to be clear, I wasn't suggesting in any way any chicanery or subterfuge or anything like that. I, I was just trying to listen to it as a, a resident out there, listening to it. I mean, preserve rural durums here as well and, and other groups, but I appreciate that explanation and taking that full face value.
Preservation.
Preservation, I'm sorry, preservation during, what did I say?
Preserve rural.
I'm on the way. Yeah, preservation, pardon me, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Manager, for that.
Well, thank you so much. I've enjoyed the, the commentary on this and, and all of the discussion. And, and just thinking about what's possible. I did have to step out for a moment. I, so this may have been discussed. I was, I was curious why we were talking about Durham Athletic Park without Parks and Rec. Was that, oh, yes, okay. All right, because I, you know, pardon my frankness on the choice of language here, but, you know, parks cost a lot of money, and most of the time, they end up with some like weird looking thing, like a pimple out of the ground, and you really don't know what it is. And I, I mean, you might find a kid that will climb on it or whatever, but I'm sure we can do a lot better. And so I, I'm just not interested in spending millions of dollars on something that just does not catch your eye when you walk past it. And as I've said before, you know, folks come to me all the time, they're talking about Cary's Park downtown, talking about the new Play Park in Raleigh. I, I appreciate them finishing those projects, but, you know, I think that, you know, the fact that we still have so much opportunity and upward, you know, growth, that we have an opportunity to outdo them. And I'm just prideful and competitive that way. So kudos to Raleigh and Cary, but I don't care. I care about Durham. And we have an opportunity to just do something so amazing here. And I do think that we can, I, I don't think our history has to be replaced. I think our history can be expanded. I think that we can, we can, we can be historic while celebrating our history. And so I think that whatever that looks like, you know, it could be some type of active public park space that convenes people, have concerts, but also, you know, celebrate our history. This isn't an amenity in my eyes. It's an amenity, not, I mean, actually, it's so much more than just the Durham Athletic Park. Those buildings around it, you know, that, that movie you were talking about, Bull Durham, there, there are buildings around it where, you know, like scenes from that movie are actually in the building themselves. You go in to some of the Measurement Inc. buildings, and, and you can see the locker room. The locker room actually, in the movie, wasn't in the field. It was in the building right up the street. So there, there is so much history in that part of Durham. I think that it's very possible to have a museum community that, that, you know, that encompasses the 10 acres collectively, still have an active, inactive, you know, field, while also, I mean, living and walking within an actual museum and park. So I, I think that we should think big on it. I had questions, you know, about, you know, if we're going to talk about a park, and I would assume Parks and Rec would be a part of that. And I, and you all may, I don't know, Director Walcott, you all may have been a part of it, I'm not going to assume, I just didn't see you speak at the mic, so. The other thing is the funding of it. I just, this may sound ignorant for me, but I'm okay with that. But in government speak, we tend, I'm just being honest. I mean, guys, we, we saw the Pickett Road situation, the boardwalk, it was a $400,000 estimate, but when it got involved with government, it turned to 2.1 million. I just don't understand it. So the inflation of costs when it comes to engaging the government just baffles me every single time. So I would love to see what type of creative funding structures, you know, that we could do, and this sounds way off base, but follow me here. There's an Indian temple right in Morrisville, off Aviation Parkway. It's one of the most beautiful facilities in the area. They built that. They came together as members of that temple, as people, and they built that beautiful temple. I have no idea why, when it comes to government, we don't even think twice about the cost. We just say, this is the cost, $100 million, and just go with it. So I hope that we can start being a bit more agile and a, and a bit more flexible in how we fund things, you know? If it means a portion is tax base and another portion is the community coming together, you know, to find, I mean, I don't know, take a Habitat for Humanity approach to building the Dangoon Park, where people come together, give us the assignments, give us the hard hats and the shovels, and put us to work. I'd love to be, I'd love to, you know, explore interest in what that would look like, rather than just the high cost of finding a general contractor to come in and do it. And we have a whole Duke University Pratt School of Engineering that could also get involved as well. And those kids want to be more involved. Biasedly, my son went to Eswatini in Swaziland inside of South Africa. They built the longest footbridge in the entire country over there. 14 kids who just wanted to go, and Duke said, you know what? We'll take care of it, we'll pay for it if you would go and do it. And they would, I just wanted to save kids' lives from drowning in a river. So I just want us to be really creative in how we can build public assets, rather than just doing it the traditional government way that would tax, the, the tax base, 40 to 80 million dollars. That, that just baffles me. And, and usually, what you get out of it is, is a metal horse-shaped bar on some turf, you know? So I, I, I don't know. That is the way the community will perceive it. And, and I think that we can find a way to be a bit more creative in that. The, the other thing is, you know, and this is partly on me, I like nice things, but I think we have to do a really good job at defining what nice is, and not just putting one of those weird-looking fixtures and say, this is public art. Like, let's be intentional, and let's be bold about our creativity. And lastly, what I keep front of mind is the, the economic and cultural wow factor. What does that look like? You know, and, and so I, I don't, I don't think with barriers and bureaucracy in mind first, I think creativity and limitless innovation in mind, and we work backwards from there. So that's going to be my contribution to this. And if we come back with, you know, I don't know, some presentation of a display, and it says $80 million to put a tarp on the field, which I know is like 200K, but I, I know there's a lot of engineering and all of that stuff, but folks, I'd never forget Light Rail, where we spent $150 million in design and consulting, and a shovel never hit the ground. That would not happen here. Okay? So take it for what it's worth. It may sound ignorant, it may sound off-base, but let's figure it out.
Mayor Stafford, welcome some direction on if council has a preference from the three design directions that were presented today. It would be helpful for us. Obviously, we don't have any immediate plans to move to development, but understanding if there's a consensus on council or a majority on council would help us to evaluate future opportunities to lean into the direction you just gave us. And those are three different visions for the park. So eliminating, eliminating options and focusing in on one of them would certainly help us to be more creative about how to move it forward.
All right, I'll be honest with you colleagues. I don't know if I saw an option out of the three. If I was to choose one of those, it would be option one. But I, I, I just think that we, we're still, I'd love to hear more contribution from the people who do parks. I'd love to hear more contribution from, you know, all those plans that we saw in the beginning, Durham. Durham does a really good job of coming up with plans. I'd love to see more of the collaboration of what all those plans could produce. If all those plans were to come together and produce one thing, what would that look like? I, in my mind, I'm seeing, you know, from Central Park all the way out, all the way down to the DAP, and, and, and engaging all of what's around there. We have all of those beautiful historic buildings that could be activated. I mean, I don't know, put a hotel in one of them, put a, a grocery store in one of them, put some, an entertainment district. It, it's just so much more that could go there, and I just don't want to think in a limited way. So if I had to choose one, I would say number one. But I think, I'm thinking about all of what's going on from, from, what is that? Foster Street, all the way up to the YMCA area, all the way to over where Sonar House is and where Blue Note Grill is, and, and all in between, from Morgan Morris Street and Liberty Apartments in the food hall. I'm thinking about that big block there, and, and I'd just love to see, I know we just did a feasibility study, we also did one before that, further up, when I first got on council, and we just heard that. That was about the Innovation and Convention Center. So I just want to be able to put all of that together and then see what an option would look like. That's if we went back and did that. But from what I see today, number one would preserve our history, and we could build around that.
Thanks, Your Honor. I, I'm looking at the timeline, the project schedule, and between November, so I'm, I'm assuming that light, oh, talking like somebody up there. I'm assuming that the light blue is, is, indicates what's next, and I'm seeing more engagement in economic analysis, and I'm wondering if, is this the time for us to telegraph choices? I don't want to short-circuit further engagement or economic analysis. So just want to keep fidelity with the schedule that's before us.
This is on, hey, Stacy, I think we're looking for some direction to be able to do this sort of next phases. So if there's a strong bias towards one of those three concepts, it would really help inform the next phasings that are, would be in, in the queue.
So the, I just want to make sure I'm reading this right. So the engagement would be around what we've chosen and the, and the, okay, I see what you're saying.
Further development of one of the phases and full economic development around one of, one of the concepts.
Gotcha.
So if we could, you know, going from three to two or going from two to one would give us some direction about where we might be headed with this.
Got you. Mr. Mayor, just for informational purposes, the clerk has informed me that we have a couple of speakers on this item who we couldn't accommodate for technical reasons earlier. So however you want to proceed, sir.
Okay. Let me go back to my, that was on the paper, right? Okay, Rivica was in person, okay? Wendy Howard and Ashley Thomas. Wendy, can you hear me? Wendy, can you hear me? What about Ashley? Ashley Thomas, can you hear me?
Mr. Mayor, I don't see an Ashley Thomas in the queue.
Do you see Wendy?
Wendy's there, but I cannot hear her.
Wendy, are you able to activate the chat to let us know that you can hear us? All right, let's, let's test, as we were having some technical issues. So Wendy, I'm going to ask you that you speak now, see if we can hear you.
Am I getting dog? I'm supposed to be speaking at the meeting there, like, can you?
Wendy, could you say that again?
Can you hear me now?
All right, Wendy, can you hear me?
Hang on.
I hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Okay, well, I'm not going to need three minutes. I've been listening very carefully and very excited about what everyone has talked about. I think the most important thing is to think of the connectivity of the green spaces. And so I'm a board member of Durham Central Park, I've lived in Durham for 27 years, and I really, I'm most excited when people acknowledge that Durham Central Park, the old ballpark, are just separated by one little street and should be considered all together and not separate. So that's all I wanted to, thank you.
I thought, did I hear the, the speakers? Did I hear the speaker say we, she wanted to turn one of those, that one street into pedestrian? No, she didn't say that. Okay, I'm just trying to sneak it on the record. Okay, all right. All right. Okay, so those are all of my speakers. Oh, is she, is she on, Ashley?
No, Mr. Mayor, there's one more who signed up for Citizens Matters, and it's Michael Reeves.
Is it on this item?
No.
Okay, let me come back.
Okay.
Let me just stay germane to this one while we're here. So colleagues, there is direction needed to move forward. I have a question about that. Stacy, so let's say we gave you option number one or whatever option. Are you all able to still consider everything that's around it? Or is it, what does next, if we say option one, what does next steps look like? Because I'm trying not to have us beholden to just, you know, just one space or just a plot of land.
Yeah, so good question.
Turn that away.
Good question. So if we say option one, and if we think about inclusion of activities identified from the Sports Commission, we would be exploring sort of what standards for a professional sports league would be necessary in that framework. That would be a foundational element, not just what design would have to happen on the front for that to occur, but what framework of the agreement might that look like? And what ongoing maintenance costs would have to be embedded into that and what standards might be. So for the Durham Bulls Athletic Park that currently exists, you know, we've got to keep pace with whatever minor league baseball requires us to do in sort of those. So we'd have to understand what that framework was to be able to sort of put that analysis and cost together before you all to present that to you. If festivals and events sort of gets embedded into that in addition to the sort of the concept one work, if the direction is also to consider taking down those fences sort of permanently, and then we need to have a professional sports activity go up, you know, the framework of all of those pieces together, we would have to sort of go back and do some tighter analysis on that and some more design work to sort of figure out if we could incorporate all of those things together and sort of concept one or whether concept two, one gets broken into kind of a couple of pieces for you to consider. I think it feels like that might be an appropriate sort of framing. Gina's giving me the nod, so I think I might be on the right track here.
And I would add to that, you know, I want to emphasize if you go back and look at, you know, option one, that there were a number of recommendations in option one beyond just preserving the sports use of the ballpark. I think Perkinsville did an excellent job talking about how that could be enhanced as a community asset, how the whole facility could be used on a more regular basis. I think for me, a pivotal reason why we're pushing for direction is should council prefer option two or three, it would preclude us, and we would want to give clear direction to the Sports Commission that the option of using it for professional sports would be off the table in options two or three. Options two or three eliminated the playability of a professional sports place. So I think the decision point for council would help give clarity to those partners that the council would not be interested in moving forward. And that's part of why I'm pushing for it. But I want to be clear that there is more visioning about how if you were to move forward with option one, you know, certainly to your point, Mayor, about how this relates to the broader area, all the comments about how it might complement Durham Central Park. Those are not, you know, those are not exclusive to proposals that develop this as a park. There's a lot of usable land that is not directly within the fence line that I think is very much open for further development and discussion based on all the principles and feedback you've sought.
And quick question, Corporation, is that ours or is that state? Ours?
He's asking about the street. I do not know. I will defer to my.
Sean, is Corporation Street ours? Yeah.
Okay, yeah. And yeah, pretty much. And the reason why I'm asking these questions, I mean, you know, I think about the level of revenue a sports team would generate. And I haven't seen a lot of revenue generated from softball, but that's not to say that it couldn't, right? They would bring probably a concentrated base or following. It also would provide an activity for us to really galvanize around. But I do think about what would be the supplemental economic impact to sustain that area beyond. I mean, the Bulls does a great job, five hundred forty-five million dollars, you know, in revenue. It makes the economic case, but you also see what happens, what's happened around the Bulls. It's built up with supportive or supplemental economic activity. So I would, you know, I appreciate the bio focus, the, you know, the green space focus. But I'm always thinking about also, in addition to that, how we activate people in those areas. And they have to have somewhere to go, somewhere to convene and somewhere to spend to make it make sense. And I think that is how we could sustain the culture, appreciate the history, make more history, and also pay for it. So that's my, colleagues, that's my holistic view of trying to honor the past, make it make sense for the present, and be innovative and bold on the future. Anybody else?
Yeah, just real quick question. Just a, so, and I'm glad to hear, thank you for the clarification, Mr. Manager, that, you know, the connectivity to Central Park could still exist with option one. I'm, the word that's got, and it's in red, potential tenants. And, you know, the tension between, is this, is this a if we build it, they will come? Or are we going to identify the tenant first before we pour all this money into bringing it up to code? For, you know, are we going to spend all this money and bring it up to code and then go shopping for? I mean, we've already got a significant baseball presence in Durham. The Durham Bulls is a nationally recognized treasure. Do we want to cast the die on another? And when we say professional, are we talking about another minor league? Are we talking major league baseball? Or, you know, what level of professionalism are we talking about in the city that already has a celebrated baseball team? And how much money do we put into bringing this place up to code in the hopes that will get somebody to bite? And if supposed to central, to the mayor's point, is softball enough of an economic inducement to pour all this money into getting it up to code, possibly denying ourselves some of the other options that two or three might provide? You know? You understand what I'm asking, so go ahead.
Absolutely. Marcus Manning, Executive Director, Durham Sports Commission. First question, as it relates to NCCU and softball. Just collegiate softball alone is not going to generate the type of revenue that we're thinking. And that's why we talked about three different potential tenants. I will say, and I did connect with the Professional League. We are having significant conversations, and I did ask the Professional League, how much could I share today? And their PR team did come back and say, because this is a public forum, we need to keep it at a high level. Those conversations are significant. And.
When you say the, are you talking MLD? Are we talking?
It's, we have to keep it general at this point.
Okay.
Okay. But I will say it's.
When we start spending the money, we got to get Pacific though, so.
Absolutely, absolutely. We do, I will say, we do anticipate an announcement here, hopefully by the end of this month or early, early next month. And again, it is pretty, pretty significant. The other thing I do want to mention, the Baseball Academy. Again, a lot of conversations around that. They are growing their membership. They want to get into the softball space, as I mentioned in the presentation. They do have partners as well, both on a professional side and a apparel partner. They've talked about the potential, what it could be in terms of investing in assisting and upgrades. Again, want to keep that conversation at a high level. But again, those have been significant conversations as well.
All right. I'll put five on it.
Just one last question. The feasibility studies that have been done in the area and all of those plans, is all of that information going to be collected and used in this as well? Okay, I was asking, my bad. Her answer is yes. Thank you. Javier?
Yep, I have to go here in a second. I would say my preference is number one because that was the question that was asked of us. I think that we can get what we want. We can activate space. I'm going to say it now. I want to close Corporation Street.
I think we agree on that.
That's for staff.
So you agree?
I see you, Director Egan.
We, I think we have consensus on number one based on what I've heard polling. Okay? Yep. Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to add, circling back to great design and how design can be a solution to so many of our problems. Just looking at ways of making this as adaptable as possible so that it can change from one thing to the next, from day to day, as needed and as desired, and make it accessible. And at the same time, something that could be used for baseball or for other sports, depending upon the day, that can be open, that can be closed, that can be used for concerts and other events. I think whatever design solutions we can come up with would be, this would be the place to do it.
Did you, when you whispered and said you want to also close Corporation, did you say that?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, and responsible, Councilmember Baker just said, I think the maximum flexibility is valuable here, important. I mean, I remember a conversation going back to when Steve Shul was mayor about like baseball and soccer there. And I think, I think, I think Ms. Howard mentions in soccer as a potential use as well. So I think those are all exciting things. It's all the word noting that if you look at those, I know that the cost estimates are pretty broad there. But the preservation, restoration, depending on where you are, it could be also the least costly, especially if there's partners there that are going to help us do this. And I think Mr. Manning also maybe mentioned that, that that could be part of the partnership with the folks who are interested. So I think those, to me, all sound good, so I'm a one.
I think we have direction. I'll just reiterate for all purposes. You have not directed us to spend any money. You have not blessed any renovation designs or projects. You have simply given us direction on kind of how to focus in and narrow our options. All decisions about the DAP will be coming before future councils for consideration and direction. So this just helps us kind of focus in on the design concept that you're willing for us to pursue.
Thank you so much. All right. Stacy, we're good? All right. Go big or go home. It's all in. Thank you all. All right, next item. Item number ten.
That's you, Wade.
We have the DPR Army walkup in here. Annual report.
Good afternoon. Mayor Williams, Mayor Protan, members of council, Manager Ferguson. I was wondering if the council would indulge considering the Sandlot to be also in the top five of baseball movies? We have consensus? Okay, good. Thank you. All right, thank you. So again, Wade Walcott with your Parks and Recreation Department. Thank you for the opportunity. This is not an action item. We don't need a thumbs up or thumbs down. Thank the manager for suggesting this and allowing time for us to talk about our annual report today. And we're going to go through our annual report, and then we're going to tie it into the rest of the city's plans and how they integrate all the way down to a team member level. And so want to thank you for that. I want you to know every day, our team works to create fun, enriching, inclusive experiences in spaces that build a safer and healthier Bull City. And today, I want to bring you a little bit more into that work. So today's presentation reflects not just what we've accomplished, but also how we serve with intention and a deep commitment to the well-being of our residents. You'll see our work is broader and more interconnected than most people realize. From youth and teen development to trail maintenance. From aquatic safety to therapeutic recreation. From sports and festival tourism to historic landfill redevelopment. From public engagement to major capital planning. You'll also see how we integrate our work year-round across the city's strategic plan, our departmental plans, staff goals, and our missions and values. But most importantly, you're going to see the human impact, the mission moments, the successes, the ways staff across, the way staff across the department lead through service to create a safer and healthier Bull City. I've been lucky enough to be in front of you many, many times, talking about a lot of different topics. And I was telling my team earlier, I don't think I've ever been too nervous to do that, except for today. And I don't know why that is. I think mainly it's because we have so many of our team members here. There's many, many more that aren't here today. And so I think it's them behind me. I just don't want to let them down. So I think that's what's been on my, on my mind. So the goals of this presentation, we're going to highlight the positive impact DPR has had on the community and well-being. And keep in mind, this was our last fiscal year, so twenty-four, twenty-five. You're going to see in our slides, you're going to see mission moments, participation data, and program growth to show the real human impact. You're going to see the depth and breadth and diversity of our work, much of which is often invisible. We're going to illustrate our unique intentional year-round integration of plans, mission, and values. We're going to demonstrate our servant leadership, both in culture and practice. You're going to see examples of staff going above and beyond for residents. We're going to highlight how servant leadership shapes our decisions and priorities and partnerships and daily actions. And we want to strengthen your understanding of how DPR is advancing equity and access, how we serve in high-priority equity investment areas. We create safer spaces, particularly for youth and vulnerable residents. And we want to demonstrate our role as a key contributor to citywide priorities. And the last couple of goals for this presentation is we want to recognize, I want to recognize and elevate and celebrate our team members. You're going to see the passion, the professionalism, the creativity and compassion behind the numbers. We're going to use these mission moments and staff quotes in here to reinforce the dedication of employees have across our divisions. And we're in our second century. We're starting our one-hundred-and-first year. And we want to demonstrate that we are a thoughtful steward of our public resources, both in the past, the present, and the future. So anyone recognize this picture? So yep, that's Wheels. So that was a huge benefit for us and the community in accomplishment this last year of reopening Wheels. We also were extremely happy about the eighty-five million dollar vote of confidence our residents had. Over seventy-five percent of them said that they trust in parks and understand the benefits that they provide and voted for that. And you heard an update, I think, just a couple of weeks ago. We're also very lucky to have a great Recreation Advisory Commission. Councilmember Riss sits on there as the liaison, and we're grateful for his advocacy and support. And we couldn't do it without you. So by the numbers, you can see what our mission is. You can see what our values are. I think I may have mentioned once before, one of the things we're really proud about our mission and values is how they were created. They were not created by me. They were not created by a select few assistant directors. But they were a long process that included the entire department, had an opportunity to weigh in and decide what is our purpose and what do we value? Not leadership talking down and saying, this is what you value, get on board. It was, this is what we collectively see as values. And you can see by the numbers over the past year, some dramatic transformations in your park system. Over the last five years, our parks are transforming. They're improving. They're becoming more accessible. And we're being more thoughtful in our approach from the very beginning. And we're looking at parks comprehensively, from the design to the outcome. And you can see we've had over twenty thousand attendees in all of our special events last year. And we're increasing our sponsorship dollars, and we're increasing our memberships, which are free for our My Durham program as well. So some of the behind-the-scenes folks that don't get a lot of attention, but Parks and Recreation does have business as well. And our Business Services Division, these were the objectives that they were able to meet over the past year. A lot of their concentration was recruitment and hiring strategies, and how do we retain those folks? And the other part was training and having a lot more training in our staff so they feel confident that they can do their job successfully. Another section is our Culture and Community Team. Their primary focus is to improve engagement within our department and within the community, and improve communication within our department and within our community. So we love working with the Engagement Department. We love working with Amy and their team as well to make sure we're making as many impactful messages across the board about our projects. So some of the highlights here that they were able to accomplish, one we're really proud of is our PULSE team or PULSE Committee. So that's Peers United in Leadership, Service, and Equity. And so many private organizations will have, you know, a board of directors. And many of those board of directors are usually folks that have had twenty-five-plus years, and they all have similar, sometimes demographic and perspective. So we wanted to take that concept from the private sector and think about how we can integrate a shadow board, if you will, in the public sector. But it was made up of folks that don't normally have a voice or a platform to influence departments. folks that don't normally have a voice or a platform to influence department policy or practice. So this team is made up of folks that generally are not supervisors and generally don't have a platform to weigh in on department policies or practice. And over the last year or so, that, that committee was formed, they meet regularly and talk about different policies or different practices that can influence the department that may be different from our own perspective, giving everyone an opportunity to weigh in on their department. The other, the other part I'll highlight here that I mentioned earlier is this team, the Culture and Community Team, really launched a branding exercise and became very brave in asking both our internal, our team members, but also the public at large of, what do you think of us? And so we put together a long list of human characteristics, and we asked people to select, pick your top five or seven of those characteristics, and, and where do you think we are right now? And what top seven characteristics, characteristics would you like to be? Where would you like DPR to be? And we did the same thing with the public. And so throughout that process, we were able to take that list of where you think we are, to where, where we want to go, and cross-reference those and turn those into action items. And those, over time, evolved into the values. So really proud of the work that we did with that regard. Now, one thing that everyone does think about when they think of Parks and Recreation is our Community Recreation Services Division. So of course, that's our recreation centers, it's our athletic programs, it's Aqua Force, it's our outdoor education. And you can see a lot of the improvements over the, the last year that we're really proud of, of these health hubs, of a community consortium at WD Hill, trying to get more community health programs available there. We've increased our outdoor recreation programming, and we are really focusing on how can we evolve and increase numbers in our after-school programs or summer camps and our teen programs. And you're going to hear a little bit more later about the inclusion aspect that we added to those programs. So we have our recreation centers. And some of the items here, and I won't read through each one, but some of these, you'll see some of the highlights. And again, the language that you're going to see here are from our team members. And so we asked them, what was your biggest success or what your mission moment was? And this is what they reported out. And so a lot of what you'll see here are different partnerships, some of the events, whether it's a high school or nonprofit, that we're always working with the community. And this, the bottom Edison Johnson is actually, that should be Holton. And we talked about our, our Holton Community Recreation Center. That mission moment was highlighting all of our senior games and opening ceremonies and closing ceremonies. And it is really a rewarding thing to, to work with so many of those seniors in the senior games and also surprisingly reminded of how competitive folks still are. We also had a highlight there at IR Homes or Campus Hills, working with Trey Murphy, the NBA player, and giving back to his community. And let's just not forget how great some of these pictures are. This really captures the impacts that our folks that work in these centers have. Again, Weaver Street, you can talk about some of their, their mission moments that they talked, that they recognized, and creating really a safe space for youth and mainly teens to be teens and, and to have a safer place to go in the Cornwallis community. And I can't say enough about our folks in all of our rec centers, but I'd also do a special shout out to the folks that work at Weaver Street and also WD Hill for the work they do that goes above and beyond what their job description is, serving our And you can see our, our last couple here at Lion Hill, or combined the two, WD Hill and Lion Park, the community health, health hub that we're doing there, and our prostrate health support group. And we can also see some of the programs that our folks are really proud, proud of at Lion Park. The picture is our example of a transformation of our playgrounds, and that is our newest playground, or our new playground next to WD Hill. You can see the surface is a new standard to make folks, to make it more accessible along with our features, and shade structures are incorporated. So we talk about the emphasis on taking care of our vulnerable populations, our youth, our teens. And that was in a, a big improvement this past year with the amount of participants involved in the My Durham program or the My Dome, I'm sorry, My Durham Teen Zone rebranding. And if, you'll take a look, and you have attached the whole annual report, but you'll see some of the memories and experiences that we were able to provide and give these folks and these young folks that not had these experiences before. So for example, going to the, the Tree Houses in Windsor, North Carolina, where many of them tried canoeing for the first time and now sparked a long, a lifelong interest in that activity. Most folks thought they were going to be drowned or be attacked by a bear at first, but once we got there, staff did a, a great job and, and folks had, had an amazing time.
I'm from there. Next time I can let them know that it's possible. It won't happen.
Well, I'm glad you weren't there, okay? It took a long time for them to get calmed down. So another big highlight for us is our specialized recreation and, and making sure that we're having as many inclusive programs and facilities as possible. And so you can see some of the biggest mission moments this year in that area is, is one of our participants who really was struggling with being involved. And because of the expertise and the training of our staff and their commitment, they can get folks involved and included, and shortly after, they're, they're having a great time with everyone involved. Our team did a great job with that, with our summer camp programs, too. If language was a barrier or any other kind of physical or mental barrier, our team went above and beyond to make sure accommodations were made and so every child could participate to their, their full capability. We talked about school age care, and I know we've talked about this with our, our county friends as well. This is a priority, could tend to be a priority for us. Very proud of our team, whether it's for teens, whether it's for our after-school programs or summer camps. Every year, we're trying different recruitment methods, we're trying different retention methods, we're doing excellent training, and we're also cross-training all of our team members in all of our recreation centers so we can have more staff available so we can keep increasing the enrollments of these programs. And of course, we're reducing greatly any barriers, which include, like I mentioned, ability-wise, but primarily financial barriers are being removed. And so there are very little, if any barriers, that allow our, our youth to participate in our programs, especially summer camp and after-school. Aqua Force, or better known as Aquatics, they made some great improvements this year. We have increased our swim lessons. We increased the hours of our indoor and outdoor pools last summer. So very proud of that team. And our in-house training and keeping our folks keep coming back every year because we know how hard it is to get lifeguards and to keep them coming back. So another major division that we have is our Park Planning and Development Division. This is the group that is doing a lot of our park system plan, our comp plan that you've adopted previously. This is about also their work and planning and the design process for our park improvement projects and comprehensively looking at all of them from not just looking at a playground, but looking at the, the entrance, the beautification, to make sure that when folks arrive at a Durham park, they have a sense of arrival, they feel safe and, and brand new or improved amenities, and taking care of all the little things to make sure people feel welcome. That, a, a big example of that was Sherwood Park just a few weeks ago. And thanks a lot to General Services Department and their partnership with that, building a brand-new playground as a centerpiece. We have a new athletic field there, we have new accessible trails, we have new pickleball courts, and a lot of improvement. And we were so thrilled with the turnout that night, and so many people said, I always drive by, but I wasn't sure what was back there. And so now we got a lot of people coming in. Our maintenance operations team did a great job with beautification at the entrance, with the planting and landscaping. So that is the standard that we're doing and incorporating in all of our parks, all 66 parks across the city. As a branch of our park planning and, park planning and development, we have our, our folks, our park maintenance operations. They're the ones that are, are doing the mowing, keeping our parks litter-free, they're cleaning all the walks when it snows, they are helping with all the synthetic turf replacements, they're doing a lot of the beautification and SEPTED improvements, our crime prevention through environmental design. And they're a huge partner with us for the annual Mayor's Corporate Challenge with our Parks Foundation, where all the different companies and corporations around Durham descend on a park of their choosing in spring and really make each one of those come, come alive. One of their, their mission moments, very proud to be a part of their team, is earlier or last fiscal year, they noticed a family in distress and, and their parking lot, and they approached them to ask them if they could help. And they found out that they, they had some, they had some troubles they were going through, but they also currently had a flat tire. Our team started calling around, reached into their pockets, and got, found the cost of a new tire, were able to change the tire, and then they connected them with the Hart team. And, and we have lots of examples of folks like that, but our folks, very proud to be a part of that team. And this is a good example of the type of work they do. So we have our annual report, but we've got all these other reports. And I know you guys went through a brief 15-minute strategic plan meeting, I think, recently. So how does all this play together? What is the alignment, some would say? So one of the things we're really proud of, so we are, of course, the feel-good department, right? We do a lot of good things, people feel good, we help health and wellness, but at the same time, we also can take a strategic business approach and we have a business plan. And one of the things we're proud about is having a connection between all of them. So we have the city's strategic plan, which, and, and now we have the, the department comprehensive plan. So that's around 10 years. And then based on those two things, we develop our strategic business plan, our three-year strategic business plan that takes elements out of the, the former two. Then every year, we develop an annual work plan of what we're going to accomplish with goals, objectives, and KPIs. All of those work plan elements, goals, objectives, and KPIs then translate down to an individual team member level. And so that goes to their SMART goals, and that goes to their performance of value, performance evaluation. And then those touch on the core values I talked about that our team developed. So to illustrate this, we have our city's strategic plan goals, then we have develop objectives underneath. So what are the objectives that touch on each one of those goals? And those goals are made up from our comp plan and our three-year strategic business plan. So we identify those, and so there's synergy with those. The next step is breaking it down into the, what is the actual objective? And under the objective, we have those measures, the key performance indicators. And so from a granular level, all the way back up, we can see it through, and we can connect these KPIs to individual team members, performance evaluations, and SMART goals. So at the end of the day, regardless of the position or title that you have or what level you are in our department, you're attached to it. And if you look in the orange box there, you'll see a little icon, looks like some different colored hands. We also were intentional in coding each one of the KPIs with one of our values. So you can see through and through the connection between all the plans, all the way down to the values, all the way down to the performance goals of our individual team members. And so if you're a team member, and regardless if you're doing our payroll, if you're helping install new trash cans, if you're working at a dog park, if you're helping out with a special event or leading that, you're connected. And once you realize that your connection not only touches on our annual work plan, but our three-year strategic business plan, which connects to the city's strategic plan, which connects to a 10-year comprehensive park system plan that will impact the lives of millions, then you realize you're a part of something bigger than yourself. And although we don't every day hold hands and sing songs all the way to work and skip into work, we do realize we're a part of something bigger than ourselves. And when those days happen and we know that we're, we're working with like-minded people and we get to serve folks and make an impact in other people's lives, there are times that we may want to run through a brick wall to come to work. And it's a great, it's great to be a part of that team. And so this is just another illustration of the, of the time and dedication it takes all of our team to make these connections, and that they're intentional and that they matter. And this is who we are. So whether we're planning for our engagement activities with our community or with each other to build morale and to strengthen our culture, or we're planning how we can get more folks to join DPR, or we're developing new parks, or working together, or a diverse group that does a lot of diverse things. So just want to thank you, council, for your continued support for our department. We're proud of the progress we've made this year, and we remain equally committed to improving where our community needs us to grow. What you've seen in this presentation reflects not only programs and projects, but a team that leads through service, works with intention, and connects every action to our mission, our values, and the city's larger goals. We truly and genuinely are honored to help build a safer, healthier, more connected Bull City, and we look forward to continuing this work together. And almost every workshop session and every meeting, we're talking about parks. The previous presentation, we talked about parks. The work session before that, we're talking about an update of transformational $85 million bond projects for parks. And so as we just heard from our, our friends and colleagues about the DAP and the potential there, or our trails downtown, or a trail from here to Roxborough coming in the future, in five or less years, a lot of our parks are improving, are going to be improved, are coming online. So we welcome the opportunity to be back in front of you sometime, to have those conversations about the operational aspect of all these new great amenities and the creative public-private partnerships that we can explore to manage these parks and, and to work together. So thank you again for the opportunity. I thank you, Senior Manager Ferguson, for the opportunity to, to be able to share our annual report.
Thank you so much. You know, a true, a true leader is, is one who you can really see their value through their staff. And I know I personally engaged with your team and on many occasions and, and just, you know, it's, I don't know, it just always feels like family and really appreciate all of you all. And Director, thank you for your leadership. Thank you. You all are, your department is something that's talked about a lot on the campaign trails because it's what community members care most about. And you always hear, we need to expand the hours. You guys are already doing a lot of what people cry about and yell about and scream about and, and just desire and yearn for. So just thank you for listening, and, and I hope that we can continue to really highlight the work that you all are already doing.
Thank you. We couldn't do anything that we're doing without all the other departments' support. We work with all of them. So we definitely don't operate in a silo. I, I can mention some departments, but it is every department. We work a lot, obviously, with General Services, the Police Department, and Community Safety, to name some of the primary ones. And as we look to the future, and any expansion or any development in a park, I'm on the phone with Director of Community Safety, Ryan Smith, or his Assistant Director, Anise, and talking about what their involvement could, should, may look like in our parks as well.
Awesome, colleagues.
Just a quick thanks, Director Walkup, for the presentation. I got to be careful. I know, I'm, you know, I'm a proud member of the Recreation Advisory Committee, but the last time you were here, I think I said it's one of my favorite commissions, and you were like, what? So like, it's my favorite one. But thank you, thank you all for being here, too, staff. This is, I'll just say briefly, this is a first-class report, and it speaks for itself. But I think not only is this a department of fun, but you really, you're showing how this is a professionally managed department, which really makes a huge impact on us here on the council, the fact that you're connecting like the overall city's strategic plan to your comprehensive system plan, to three-year annual plans and sort of KPIs and benchmarks and goals, objectives. It's really great stuff. And so I love the, the blend of sort of the fun, but also the really tight, tight professional management, because this is an important part, as the mayor said, a really important part of how citizens experience a city is through the Parks and Rec Department. So thanks for your leadership and for your team here. So appreciate it. So thanks for your leadership and for your team here, so appreciate it.
Thank you, Director Walcott, and thank you to everyone from Parks and Recreation who has come here today. We really, really appreciate your work. I'm going to echo something that I've heard Mayor Pro Tem Middleton say, which is that our parks are our most, our city's most egalitarian spaces, and really, in many ways, our society's most egalitarian spaces. When, a couple questions here. When, I remember when we got the presentation of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which is a beautiful and very accessible document. One thing that I thought was really special about Durham compared to our peers is the proportion of our Parks and Rec spending that goes towards programming, and making sure that we're doing things with, especially with young people in our city. So if we think about a goal, like, a really key goal is to make sure that all young people in Durham have access, reasonable access, to fun and engaging and educational and enriching activities outside of school hours, before-school, after-school, weekends, and summertime. How do you feel we're doing in that space? Do you think we're doing well? You know, do you think that, to realistically get there, we'd need more resources? I'm just curious about your take on that.
Yes, and. So yes, and we, in terms of understanding where we are with a lot of our out-of-school-time resources, Councilmember Rist and another member of our commission, we have been talking recently, and we're going to launch a out-of-school-time study. I think this was brought up at a city-county meeting.
Joint City-City County Committee.
Yes. So, we've contacted, talked with the person that did the previous one, I think it's Wake County, so we're going to launch that. So, that will help us, the whole community, city, county, regardless of your jurisdiction, understand where we are and what we need to do.
That's perfect. I'm so glad we're doing that. Can you tell me the timeline and who's spearheading that?
I can't, only because I don't know the timeline yet. We just started talking about that, and so, right now, it'll come from our department. And I forget, I don't know if you remember Councilmember Rist, but it was like, I want to say the Extension Office was assisting.
Yeah, Club Extension, yeah.
Assisting with this. Yes, same person, yeah.
Next question. I think it's so important that we infuse parks into our neighborhoods and make them these central and celebrated civic spaces. There are two cities, to my knowledge, there are two cities that have successfully reached 100% resident accessibility within a five-minute walk of parks. I'm wondering how you think we might be doing with a goal of maybe like a 10-minute walk of parks? You know, if that's a reasonable goal in your mind, if it's possible, and if you think we're moving toward that goal or away from that goal, and what you think we might need to do to get that.
Sure. I would need some help from my colleagues to understand how reasonable and how close to 100% we could get, just based on infrastructure of the city and placement. Yeah, exactly. We are definitely moving toward that, and becoming better at that in that 10-minute walk radius. When you mentioned that and mentioned resources, that is going to be a priority of ours moving forward. And I mentioned that earlier in my comments about the future of Durham, the future of parks, and the expansion of those. We're doing a good job now of redoing and fixing up a lot of our existing parks, but we'll know, we'll need to be creative in how we acquire resources to get access to more land, and what those part, and how that can happen, and also resources from team members to be able to maintain and take care of all these new assets. And that may not always be on, from the city, but it could also, we could look at public-private partnerships and how those resources are managed and maintained, and that is key to have them maintained at a high quality. We're doing everything right now, whether they're new or redoing them, at an extremely high standard and high quality. And we must keep those maintained at a high quality for years and generations to come.
Great. And then, last question, the land and the parks. Can you just remind us the timeline of when we're supposed to get the next set of testing results back from NCD-EQ, so that we can, you know, sort of start thinking about next steps and redesign and upgrade in those parks?
Sure. I believe that it's still, I haven't heard anything different from the state when they've said the end of the calendar year.
Great, thank you. Two plugs. I have a new daughter, and so I've been thinking a lot and visiting places, and playgrounds with seats. We've been going to a playground, and there's no benches, and you just become painfully aware. And then, I'm a broken record on this, but I'd love to see, you know, kind of our first kiosk in a park at some point.
Please, I'll send you a list of some of the parks that'll help you out right now. And I think you would really enjoy going to Sherwood Park. We have at least one expression swing that allows you to sit in the swing with your child in front of you, so you can see eye to eye while you're swinging back and forth.
Thank you for that.
You have one of those for adults?
We could probably squeeze somebody in there. And we have the fire department, I'm standing by to get them out, so.
That's crazy work. Just a couple of celebratory comments. First off, what a wonderful and inspiring report. You've mentioned opening of wheels, everybody's really excited about that. I want to also just honor the team behind you and those ambassadors of our city, who did such great work in making Durham a special place, it's good to see them here in the meeting. Yeah, and I appreciate Councilmember Baker's comments. There are some cities where it's just the Parks Department, but I'm glad that we have Parks and Rec here. There are some affluent communities who, with the Parks Department, is just that, the space, because they have the means to provide activities and outlets and exposure for their kids. But here, we not only just provide the space, but activities. It was, you know, I had had great parents, God bless their memories, but it still got sketchy sometimes when you went outside. And it was the Parks and Rec Department that saved my life, in conspiracy with them providing activities and some structured things, because things could have gone another way. And I know that we're going to play, this department's going to play a large part, and it already has, in many ways, unheralded, but it's going to play a large part in whatever plans we have for violence reduction in our city. So just kudos to an amazing year. By way of plug, I hope this council eventually sees its way to two cents, rather than one cent, for parks. I think it's time for that, so I look forward to that, getting bumped up. Look at what we've done with one cent over the years. Imagine what it would look like with the two cents for parks. So just want to put that plug out there. So, no questions, just commendations and celebration. And again, great to see this team. Thank you all so much for what you do for this city. It's sacred work you all do. It's life-saving work. Those kids aren't just playing, they're being diverted as well, they're being strengthened, they're building character, and being provided with options, other than some of the options we've seen out there that take our babies away from us. So, thank you so much for the work you do. Appreciate your report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And I had to return because it was parks, and just say that I greatly appreciate it. I appreciate that there is an upcoming study. It would be great to hear more feedback on that as well. And I'm mindful of how much has gone into the last few years of development around parks. And with the bond and all of the things happening, I want to make sure we don't lose sight of some of those areas that aren't seeing those touches. And then also, making sure that the Durham Housing Authority locations, especially like Cornwallis, where Weaver Street is, there's more curiosity about what could happen in those spaces. And then, I'm mindful that, so during the campaign trail, one of the students, Kid Folks, asked about infrastructure violence, and that was, of course, I've never heard that before. And she explained that it's the way we use our infrastructure to prevent folks from laying or sleeping or sitting too long. And I'm not sure where that fits into your conversation, or where it fits into your department around infrastructure, or how you're organizing the plans around benches, whether they're too short or too, like, not long enough, or, like, all of those things, the comfort level, all of those things are coming to mind. And so I would love to know what your thoughts are around that. And then, yeah, and then also just, you know, like, really, if there was a way to get an idea around some of those areas that we have partnerships with nonprofit organizations or for-profit, whatever, with those areas that we do have those partnerships, what it looks like, because I do think some of them could be better, so to speak. I know there's contracts, I know there's all these MOUs, but what that looks like, clearly, would be helpful.
Could you help describe, what was your question? What did you want to see with those partnerships?
Oh, essentially, where they are. Like, what the timeframes are, how long they'll last, and then what kind of revenue it generates or doesn't.
Okay. So, a list of our partnerships that we have with nonprofits and our community recreation centers?
Yes.
Okay.
And parks.
And I remember that question, and like, there was a striking terminology.
Never heard that before.
The infrastructure, what did she call it again?
Infrastructure violence.
Infrastructure, so basically a bench with the...
Too much light.
The middle...
Bar.
Bar in the middle, it's like, it restricts people from sleeping on it. The other side of that is also, like, when you have that, when you don't have the bar, it invites so many people to sleep on it overnight and congregates. I thought it was a striking, some striking language, because I never thought of it that way. And I thought that it would probably, one day, bring rich debate and conversation around, you know, how embracing is the infrastructure versus, how do you balance, you know, overly congregating of individuals versus, and then managing the safety of, you know, the safety of the park, versus also accommodating people as well. I didn't have a, I was agnostic on it, but I just thought it was striking, but, anyway. Any other comments? Thank you all for the work you do.
I'm sorry, and then definitely, I wasn't here to cheer you on about wheels, but I do think that it's been a heavy lift, and it's been lifted, and then just keeping in mind to make sure that there's opportunities for children to participate with no-cost programming happening at wheels as well. So whether that's through Parks and Rec, or some partnership, figuring out what that looks like would be really helpful. I think that's one of my biggest points of contention in the community.
Okay.
All right. Thank you all so much, Director Walcott. Thank you and your team. And for the new event spaces coming, for us to have more concerts that are coming up, that you said in the presentation. All right, I'm making that up too. All right. All right, folks, we're almost out of here. Last item. Item number 13, the most exciting one, Source Water Resiliency and Response Plan update. You all talk too much, that's the problem. We talk too much, and that's why we're still here.
And I think it's just you.
Good afternoon. Still afternoon.
Welcome.
You pack the house all the time, don't you?
Mayor Pro Tem Middleton and City Council, those who are still here. So I'm Sid Miller, Assistant Director of the Department of Water Management. And we can go as quickly as you like.
Don't say that out loud, because, I mean, really quick on my end, as quickly as you can.
Absolutely. So, I mean, the main reason that I'm here with this presentation is because America's Water Infrastructure Act requires the city to develop a source water risk and response plan, and then update that plan every five years. We have just updated that plan, and I'm informing you that we have updated that plan, thereby satisfying the requirements of the federal law. So, this is all just information about our water system. And you have this in your packets, and it's probably not new to any of you. Stop me when you have a question.
Oh, I love this.
This is something that you've voted on as far as a contract, and we are in the process of developing this tier quarry as a future water supply source. This is something that you know about, and you'll be hearing much more in the next few years to come, as we develop Jordan Lake as our next major water supply source. This is the law I mentioned. This is the risk and resilience assessment that we've done. It leads to an emergency response plan, which we've done and updated. This is how the plans sort of work together. There's stakeholder engagement that's been involved, internal, external stakeholders. We involve our critical customers, we have a critical customer program. We are connected with five of our neighbors through nine interconnections. The only other city in our region as connected is the city of Raleigh, with whom we are These are the plans that we have that are sort of integrated within our emergency response We go through trainings and exercises every year. And this is our implementation strategy, which is constant. This is the Source Water Resiliency and Response Plan itself, the elements. And our bottom line, I've sort of mentioned some of these things, we have a lot of redundancy in our system, we have all of these interconnections, we can move, we can actually, if our largest water treatment plant were to go down, as long as it's not the middle of the summer, no one would know. And in fact, we took the Williams Water Treatment Plant offline for nine months, and nobody That's true.
The Williams family, the Williams family knew as well.
And recently, you approved an additional investment in our water supply watershed protection program, and I think, I mean, that paid just huge dividends. We leveraged $4 to every dollar from our ratepayers in protecting the land in our watershed. And that's it.
Thank you so much. It was a lot of really rich information that I thoroughly enjoyed, really appreciate it. Madam?
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman.
I just wanted to ping just a couple of things, mainly if there were any updates from the lab. I know there was some conversation about new equipment that might be coming online.
So, we're in the process, I mean, we're just beginning, but we're in the process, we're going to purchase a piece of equipment that will allow us to analyze PFAS in our own lab.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, I know, does that include reverse osmosis at all?
No, that's a treatment process.
But that's not that type of equipment that we'll get?
No. No.
Just want to keep it on our radar. And then just a thought, just understanding the dynamics of the way things happen in our federal government, there are some folks who are not getting paid and they're not getting paychecks, and I just wanted to propose some study or at least some evaluation around whether, what it would look like to make sure that no one's water was cut off during this period, knowing like, like, there's just not cutting water for bills.
So we do have a hardship fund, and we are prepared to provide for any of those individuals that come to us.
And if the hardship fund is depleted, what's the plan?
We come to you.
Okay.
We specifically put, at the beginning of the shutdown, there was specific direction given around, around the government shutdown to make sure that the hardship fund would be made available for, for people who may be not getting paychecks from the federal government.
And how much is currently in that hardship fund?
I don't know, but we'll get that information for you.
Sounds great, thank you.
Thanks, Sid, as always. I also just want to say, we've had a lot of fun discussions about the DAP and Parks and stuff, but like, this stuff is like so critical to all our citizens in Durham. So I want you to know, just as one councilmember, like, whenever you come, you take as much time as you want, because this is like, I mean, I really appreciate the work that Water Management is doing every day, as you said, behind the scenes, all this kind of stuff that people aren't aware of, but Williams was down for like nine months, no one even knew, so you guys do a great job, and just want to make sure you know that, like, you have as much time as you want, because this is important stuff.
Thank you.
Now that you make me feel bad, I agree, you know.
And if I could just add, I think that that appreciation is why I brought the whole environmental, environmental committee of the Leadership North Carolina to visit, the Williams, no, which facility was it?
You went to the Brown Water Treatment Plant.
Yeah, so we went to Brown, and I will say that this, I want to like shout from the rooftop, we have phenomenal staff, gives really good layman interpretations and presentations on how our systems work, and I want to encourage folks to stop using the flushable wipes in the toilets and stop putting things that do not decompose in the toilets and in the drains, including grease and other. But I just want to make sure that folks understand, like, what you do at home has impact, and as much as you can prevent our drainage system from catching all of that, keeps our costs lower, and so we can do a better job with our hardship fund, if we have the funds to do that. That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Great present, oh, I'm sorry. No, no, great presentation, thank you, appreciate it. I just, one quick question, what makes a critical customer? Is it the usage level or their...
It's the volume of water that they use or what it is that they're providing.
Got you.
So for example, like, if they're responsible for dialysis or, it's a hospital or...
Right.
What have you. So it depends on what the use is and how much the volume of, what the volume of use is.
Got you, and the, the criticality of the service they provide to the citizen. Okay, all right, just curious, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, did you have any comments?
I'll just second councilmember Rist and say, yeah, thank you so much for coming, for all the work that you do, I appreciate the presentation, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Mayor, I know the subject matter is perfunctory in terms of, we had an obligation to report this out, but I just appreciate, especially councilmember Rist and the sentiment all of you shared around. I want you to know, if you don't get to see other colleagues or other municipalities' water systems, you have a, you have one of the most well-planned resilient water systems, certainly one of the, of the ones I've ever been associated with. Your predecessors and your staff and their predecessors have been making investments for 50 or 60 years, the interconnectedness in particular is something that so many utilities do not have the benefit of. We have so many options, should we have some sort of major crisis, that most municipalities just don't have. So while, and I am grateful, Sid, for how quickly he moved, I want to underscore the importance of what you're seeing, and this is a real success story that you should all be really proud of.
Thank you all.
The, just one thing about like tier, I haven't been there yet, is there, is it accessible, walking?
It's accessible to you, if you call ahead.
Oh, I see.
We're doing our best to keep people out of it.
Okay.
When we can.
Gotcha, gotcha.
But just give us a call, we'll take you over.
Got it, got it. I just, I see these pictures and I'm like, wow, this is a, this would be a peaceful walk, so I got it, thank you. All right, well, that'll be, we have one more item, I have a speaker, Michael Reeves, can you hear me?
Mr. Mayor, he's not, he's not responding.
No longer signed in? Okay, well, colleagues, we, colleagues, if you will, I put something next to you, just for you to read over, we will discuss this later, but I wanted to make sure you had it in front of you, and I'll propose to have a conversation about this a little later with you all, one-on-one. It's just something that was provided at other cities or adopting, and I didn't want to go into detail about discussion today, but I did want to put it in front of you for us to discuss in a future meeting. But there was some, some due diligence work that I need to do around this and discuss with you all as well. So you have that, this is a resolution declaring intent of the city of Durham, North Carolina to participate in the commercial property assessed capital expenditure CPACE program. I'll talk more about it later. All right, are you ready to settle this up?
I am, Mayor. To settle the agenda this evening, we have on consent items one through two, items four through eight, and items 10 through 13 on GBA public hearings, item 16. The other items on your agenda today were either referred back, approved, or you received a presentation.
All right, so, sounds good. We will, I'll accept the motion to approve the...
So moved.
Thank you. It's been moved properly, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All right, thank you all so much, I will see you on November 17th at 5:00 PM. Now, I will adjourn the meeting at 4:54, thank you all. You're no longer held hostage.
And this is a post-meeting comment, but I want to thank Amy and the production staff with that power outage, their life got crazy for about an hour there at the start of the meeting, so thanks for all they did to hold us together.